Let's go ahead and call the regular agenda of the June 19th, 2023 Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with a prayer by Commissioner Val and pledge by Commissioner McCamey.
Heavenly Father, once again, we come to you tonight to praise you, to give you honor, to thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you give us each and every day so freely. Please forgive us, Lord, when we don't please you. Please forgive us when we act on our own. Please forgive us, Father, when we don't follow your precepts. But tonight, we ask that you be with us tonight so we will. We ask that you be with each heart, each mind, Father, as we discern the business of your people. Give us the wisdom of Solomon, Father, to do what's right on your side. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. Anyone would like to speak on an item on or off the agenda can address the commission. You'll have three minutes to state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Eaton. I live at 112 Wilson Avenue here in Clinton. I'm coming before you this evening as concerned citizen to talk about dignity and respect. Recently, I've attended various meetings and witnessed a few of our county elected officials treat the citizens of our great county without dignity and respect. I believe our county officials should be held to a higher standard of civility. Therefore, it is unprofessional for our county officials to address our tax-paying residents with a disrespectful tone. I am a witness to this behavior, and I have experienced this treatment myself within the past couple of months from a county-elected official. As a tax-paying citizen of Anderson County, I don't think that our county officials should be treating us this way. We deserve to be treated better than this. After all, you do work for the taxpayers, right? When we ask y'all a question or disagree, y'all should treat us with dignity and respect. When citizens come before a board meeting with a concern that they have, they shouldn't be afraid that they are going to get jumped on by a county-elected official. I believe this treatment is disgraceful and unacceptable. For example, if I worked at a grocery store, restaurant, or any other public job and treated a customer disrespectfully, I would get fired for treating them this way. We, the people of Anderson County, deserve to be treated with dignity and respect from our elected officials. Thank you.
Can y'all hear me?
Good evening. My name is Scott Peters. I live at 109 Oak Ridge, Stonebridge Way here in Oak Ridge. I come to you tonight as someone who's practiced OB-GYN for the last 37 years. I come to you tonight as someone who's done his very best to take care of mamas, mamas-to-be, and their unborn babies to the best of my ability and have a happy outcome. I come here because I'm irritated with the Tennessee State Legislature over their abortion ban and the language that they use to describe it. So I'm here to see if maybe this group can help us, because the patients and the doctors need some help. I have written to the USA Today, the Wall Street Journal, the local papers. I have written to some attorneys in Knoxville about this. I've written to some of our legislators. Not much has happened. Please understand, I am not here to debate whether abortion should be legal or not. I am not here to debate when life starts. I am just here hopefully to clarify an education about what an abortion is and perhaps even more importantly, what an abortion is not. So in order to do that, we've got to define what an abortion is. If you look it up, dictionary app, the app says, "It is removal of an embryo from the womb." American Heritage Dictionary, Webster's Dictionary, medical online dictionaries, Stedman's Medical Dictionary, it is termination of pregnancy by removal or expulsion of an embryo from the uterus. The Catholic Church even describes an abortion as "any action that has its sole and direct purpose, the ending of life, in the womb." My definition is the voluntary intentional termination of a viable intrauterine pregnancy. That's important to note, viable and intrauterine, meaning in the uterus. So, real quick, some scenarios. Some patient comes in, she's late. You do a pregnancy test, she's pregnant. You do an ultrasound. I have pictures if anybody wants to see one. She's eight weeks pregnant, it's got a heartbeat. Terrific. We'll see in 32 weeks and have a baby, hopefully. Next week, two weeks later, she comes in, you do another ultrasound. It measures nine weeks, but there's no heartbeat. Most of us would call this an asymptomatic miscarriage. The real medical term is a missed abortion. Missed abortion. People hear that and they think Sally went to see Dr. Peters and he gave her an abortion. People think Sally went and had an abortion. No such thing. She aborted, and now she needs to have a DNC, because the uterus needs to be evacuated. But that is not an abortion. Tennessee Legislature says it is. They just say now it's not a criminal abortion. Sooner or later, that lady starts bleeding and cramping. She shows up in the emergency room and she's bleeding and cramping. Now it's called an incomplete abortion. But it's got nothing to do with an abortion. Because of our definition, it's not viable anymore. She needs a DNC, not an abortion.
Sorry to cut you off, but we've got to move to the next person. But if you want to stay or talk, we might be able to refer this to a committee or something. Somebody wants to draft anything.
I can wrap it up in 30 seconds.
Commission, okay with that? Go ahead.
All right. Two other things. They recently passed another amendment that they have said if you have an ectopic pregnancy, that is a pregnancy in the uterus, it's not, excuse me, outside the uterus, in the tube. It's not in the uterus. It's not viable. It's not in the uterus. That lady needs surgery or treatment, or sooner or later it's going to rupture and she's going to bleed to death. A molar pregnancy is also one that is, there's no fetus, but it can kill the mother. It can cause cancer. Chorio carcinoma, it needs to be treated. The Tennessee Legislature has now said, molar pregnancy, ectopic pregnancy, you can treat with an abortion. It's just not considered a criminal abortion. My only point is, let's get the nomenclature right. Let's get the language right. These are not abortions. These are patients that need to be treated with medical therapy. They are not abortions. Even though they want to say it's not a criminal abortion, well, it's not an abortion period. So it would be nice if they could get the lingo correct. That's all I have to say.
Questions or comments?
I'll say, thank you, Dr. Peters, for bringing your education and your expertise to this commission. Obviously, we don't have a say-so in it, but as my wife in the medical field will tell you, it's not politicians' job to trust and know what the doctor knows best for their patients. So, thank you.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We refer this matter to the Legislative Committee.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to refer to the Legislative Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone else from the audience that would like to address the commission? Okay. If not, we will move on to the approval and correction of agendas, starting with the consent agenda. Commissioner Palmer.
I'd like to move the Library Board amendments from the consent to the regular agenda, maybe under number 10.
Okay, number three under item 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other corrections to the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve as amended? A motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, and also I had a reminder text to be sure and talk into the microphones tonight. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Let's move to the approval of the regular agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Jaeger.
No, nothing to add. Just wanted to get this over.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. And, Dr. Peters, if you want to leave your contact information with Annette in the back when they set up the legislative meeting to discuss, she can reach out to you if you want to come to that. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we'll move on. Number five, elections. We have the nominating committee report. Chairman Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see that I'm on here twice. Do you want me to go ahead and do everything right here and knock it off on the, we can knock off number 10?
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. It's just a couple of things. Nominating committee met on May the 8th. Meeting was called to order. We had quorum. Commissioner Jaeger was elected as vice chairman of the committee. And then we had eight nominees for the one opening for Library Board. And after the first round, Michelle Jacobs received the majority of votes. Therefore, was nominated as the new Library Board member. The nomination is passed to full commission for approval. I so move.
We got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. And this is for the county-at-large seat that was vacated by Teresa Venable. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, next, we have the departmental reports. Tourism. Stephanie Outman Hall.
I'm just presenting the tourism council members for 2023, 2024, for your approval.
Commissioner Isbell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a personal conflict with the representative from Sequoia Marina. I'll be voting no on that individual. And I don't, he was actually approved through the consent agenda and didn't come through the regular agenda. But other than that, I'm fine with everybody.
We have a, I got a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a problem with Commissioner Isbell is speaking out against one. Should we table this, or should we wait, should we find out more information why he's objecting?
Do you want to take him as a group, or was your motion as a group?
I was just going to set the nomination. So they can, does this went through the tourism committee?
I think I have before.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
He asked me a question. That's why I thought it was, sorry.
I'm just clarifying the motion.
No, go ahead.
I guess I have a problem on approving this when we have a commissioner that has, that knows something, why one shouldn't be elected. I guess I would like to know either why or how we're going to fill that spot, or if we're, as a group, if we're going to approve it with someone that disapproved it.
Do you want to elaborate?
No, I spoke to the law director about it. I can't.
Just a couple of options here. Remember, back to tourism, or you can take them up one by one and let that be sufficient. Now, remember, Commissioner Isbell said he had a conflict and he said he was going to vote no. So that's what he's doing. He's not, we're not letting the conflict pause here. He's just going to cast a no vote. So if you're not happy, send it back to tourism for them to reconsider, or you can take each member up independently, which you've got 20-something, right?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm fine with everyone else. Don't have any conflict whatsoever. And I spoke with Ms. Wells before she actually put him on there, that I had a conflict.
Commissioner Mays.
Is this a new appointment?
No. He was appointed during, to fill someone else's term, and then this will be coming on through, reappointed every year. So.
Commissioner Foster. Oh.
I'm fine if we want to take that one out and vote separately. If we can vote as a group on the others, I'm okay with if that's, I'm fine with making that the motion if we want to take him out and then vote on that separately.
Okay. Do you want to, I don't know which board member that we're talking about.
Sequoia Marina.
The Sequoia Marina. Okay, so do we want, do you want your motion to be every, everyone except the Sequoia representative?
That's not.
Are you fine with that?
Yes.
As the second. Okay. Commissioner Val.
Nevermind, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, sir.
Okay, so we're voting on the group excluding the Sequoia representative. Any other questions? Let's go to the board and vote.
This is for everyone else.
Right, correct. Motion passes unanimously.
And I will advertise that as a vacant position and then see if we, I'll try to fill it and bring it back to you all in July, if that's agreeable.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the additional spot individually.
Okay.
Okay. Motion in a second. Commissioner Isbell, do you have any discussion? Any other, any discussion on this is to approve the Sequoia Marina nominee? Correct. All right. Does everybody understand?
You want to approve him?
That, that, are you moving to approve?
I made a motion to approve the Sequoia. I separated it out so if there was any conflict that my old, somebody voted no, so.
But this is a motion to approve that person. Correct. Okay. Commissioner Mays.
I guess, I just want to make sure that, now, I want to respect Commissioner Isbell's position, that if it's anything that, is there, has anything to do with the county, it's just strictly personal. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, we're going to approve someone that we have removed from the list. Is that what we're doing?
No, we separated the list out. So we had, we had 20, we voted for 19, and we're voting for this other one separately because, Commissioner, there was, there was.
Okay, I got you.
Question with one, yeah. Any other discussion? Commissioner Foster.
Senator, you were going to make a comment, I guess, before I, didn't know there was something.
No, I mean, well, we'll see how this vote goes, and then we can talk about, yeah, what we're going to do. If y'all don't fill it by this vote, then we'll advertise the position.
If it doesn't lose. Okay. Let's go to the board and vote. Four yes, 10 no. Fails.
You will advertise the position, and I'll come back to you all next month with a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to committee reports. Start with purchasing report by Finance Director Robbie Holbrook.
Okay, under the purchasing committee, there were six contracts under Section A that have been approved by the law director, seeking approval as a group. Be happy to answer any questions, or individually.
Motion in a second to approve as a group. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I don't know if you can answer this. I wasn't at the purchasing, but I had a, number one, NHC Oak Ridge EMS contract. Is that a contract we've had to pass?
Nathan may have to answer that.
Yes, sir, it is. It's a renewal.
And what, so we get compensated, I'd say, to provide the services your department provides. What type of revenue is that?
So these are very particular patients that fall under nursing homes, and we have an agreement with each nursing home. So that's why you see multiple of them on there. These are patients that are still covered by Medicare, but they're under a different Medicare plan. Medicare pays a certain amount of money to the nursing home to maintain the care of that person. So this is an agreement for us to charge them the Medicare fee schedule rate if any transports occur while they, while they're at that facility.
Guess what I'm getting towards is the upcoming budget for 2024, 23, 24. Do you have it earmarked in your budget, these contracts here? I mean, I'm not saying you got the contracts listed up. What I'm asking is, do you have a line item for these four contracts that produce potential revenue? Is there a projection for revenue, and what is it?
They're not separated. They're within the patient care transports and patient charges.
So they're all folded into that?
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under contracts pending law director approval, they have all been approved now. The Claxton bus lines, William Scotty Phillips with two for school transportation.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Wondell.
I was going to have a follow-up question on the last item. I'll wait since you got a motion. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll come back.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under number four, the waste management, four and five, the waste management, Public Works contract, I'm requesting a motion to extend the existing waste management host agreement and disposal agreement and additional 60 days under the same terms and conditions to allow for continued negotiations and final contract proposal that will be presented through the normal purchasing and full commission process for approval. So this is to extend the current contract 60 days.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I heard what you said, but I'm reading this agenda, items four and five.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't say anything about 30 days or 60 days. My interpretation is if we pass item four under Section B on the purchasing report, it would say we're approving a five-year disposal agreement, pricing from competitive bid. So are we approving that tonight, or is it being placed on hold?
It's placed on hold right now. There's still negotiations underway.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Chairman, I would like for the agenda to reflect what the motion actually is, you know, because I'm going to vote no if we're going to just say it's going to be 60 days or 30 days. But, you know, I got to go on what's in front of me in black and white. And what's in front of me says we're going to approve or disapprove a five-year disposal agreement. Now, if we can make it, go ahead.
Four and five have been removed from.
Four and five have been removed?
Yes.
So that's just discussion?
Yes. No, not on four and five. The request is to extend for 60 days. Those are not ready to vote on.
Okay, so we're not voting on four and five?
No.
We're just, this motion is for an extension only?
In a perfect world, four and five might have been ready, but we were pushing things a little too fast, I think, so.
Okay, so the motion, Mr. Chairman, is just to extend?
Yes.
For both four and five?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under other business, there is a request to bid the following on Gub Deal: seven vehicles from the Sheriff's Department and one cafeteria serving line from Norris Middle School.
Motion by Commissioner Allen to approve, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under two surplus real estate on Highway 25W in Rocky Top, as requested by the law director. The law director informed the committee of options to convey the 1.7 acre to Powell Clinch Utility District. I'm going to let Jay, let me speak to this, because it's not, Powell Clinch has not met since the purchasing meeting. I don't think they're ready to make any kind of an offer or haven't.
Hasn't yet. You saw my earlier email today. Powell Clinch doesn't meet for another two weeks. Therefore, they can't formulate an offer for us, nor can they approve the agreement until their official meeting. So that's where we stand. You can wait on them, see what they come back with on their offer, or you can formulate an offer tonight that we can put in the contract, and you can approve the contract tonight contingent upon them approving it, and give the mayor and the chairman the ability to sign it. So it's totally up to you, the route you want to take. You can wait 30 days until we can get this back from Powell Clinch, or you can kind of fill in the blanks with what's left to do with the agreement. And that would be the consideration, the monetary consideration, and accepting the agreement, and also giving the mayor and the chair the ability to sign. The only problem with that is if they have some problem with the language of the contract, and they have to come back and we have to amend the contract. So that's where we're at, and I'll be glad to help you with any of those options.
Commissioner Jaeger.
This is actually from Mr. Stevenson. Do you have a date set for this auction?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The wheels are turning. It may not be sold for another year.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wells.
I would just say, based on my previous years in real estate experience, as the potential sellers of this property, unless we're going to come in top dollar or over fair market value, we would behoove ourselves to sit silent and let the potential buyer make an offer to us before we counter or do anything further. You know, we, it was said in that budget, in that meeting, that we needed to potentially give it to them because it was worthless, get the $800 back that we paid in 1930. And as Commissioner Alley showed us clearly, the market in 1930 is not what it is in 2023. So let's sit back and see what's best for the taxpayers.
Everybody's got the note from Assessor Alley on the value. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, what my motion is, is to move forward with the recommendation from the property assessor, as he has written. And that gives them opportunity because it, like Commissioner Wells said, it gives them something to start on when they go, when they have their board meeting, because it'll take 30 days every time for Powell Clinch to meet. They wouldn't have to meet. So that just keeps prolonging it. So I think if we go with what the property assessor recommended, send to them. That, that's my motion.
So that'd be, you gave us a range?
Yeah.
So approve, approve the range or approve the 20?
Approve the 20.
Okay.
You can always come down. You can't go up.
Does everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 2 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Under number three, surplus of old drug evidence building, as requested by Commissioner Mays, the motion was made to defer this item until the next purchasing committee meeting. Under new business, there are three contracts from EMS. All have been approved now by the law director, seeking approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, in the near future, could you see if you could dig up what the revenue projections have been for that, for these types of contracts, and make it available to all the commissioners?
I can.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
So the last thing on, I mean, it can be new business or old business, but the sales agreement with Crossroads Christ Fellowship Church for the new Claxton Elementary Land, we need to, because this agreement extends beyond the current physical year, it will require commission approval. So I just need the sales agreement approved tonight.
Motion to approve the sales agreement by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Varon. Commissioner Mays.
Is that something that we need to add, in kind of following Mr. Commissioner Wondell's line? Is, I don't see this on the agenda. Is that something that we need to? In, in, kind of following Mr. Commissioner Wondell's, um, line, is, I don't see this on the agenda, is that something that we need to add to the agenda before we vote on it?
That might, well, I mean, it has been old business, I mean, it's already been business under the county commission and.
I get it, I just.
Well, I mean, Commissioner, I mean, Catherine did email Commissioner Isbell, I'm not sure that, um, maybe I should have requested this be added to the agenda. I didn't really, I thought that was already done.
You wanna make that your motion now to add? Add it to, add it as a new business item under purchasing to the agenda?
I thought it was on the agenda, but I'll do that if necessary.
It wasn't, at, at the, at the previous, this month's purchasing agenda, it was added after the agenda. After the meeting, I'm sorry.
Because it overlapped, it's automatic, we have to do it, or, or it's, no, no, it, right?
That does need to be done, just to.
Yeah, I'll add it to the agenda.
Okay, got a, got a motion, uh, are you okay with that? As a second to add, add it to the agenda first? Any discussion? This is just that we're gonna add it to the agenda and then we'll, we'll vote. Uh, Commissioner Wondell.
What exactly are we adding to the Virginia, uh, agenda?
Just to approve the sales agreement from the Crossroads Christ Fellowship Church purchased for the new Claxton Elementary School. Jay approved the contract, Jay's already approved the agreement, but he suggested that this agreement extends, since it extends beyond the current physical year, the current year we're in, into twenty-three, twenty-four, it will, it will require full commission approval.
So, so, so if I heard you correctly, it's just the purchase agreement?
Yes, you've already, you, the commission has already approved the purchase of the, of the building and land. This is just to approve the agreement. I should have actually emailed this out, and, um, that's what happens when Catherine and I kinda, she does the purchasing agenda, I mean, meeting, and then I come in and do commission, and I didn't follow up well, I apologize.
And I apologize, I missed a budget committee, uh, meeting myself. What, so this has nothing to do with the three million dollars that was being asked, this is, that's still separate, correct?
Yes, that does, has nothing to do with that.
Thank you for the clarity, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wells.
Just like to say, I'm not comfortable voting on an agreement of this magnitude that I'm not even have the chance to read yet. I don't think it's a, a fair thing to do as a representative of the citizens in the counties.
Commissioner Isible.
Now, this is exactly what we approved in full commission before, it's just in written form, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I have to agree with Commissioner Wells also, uh, and Commissioner Wondell, you know, about seeing it first, uh, just to make sure if there's some typo or something, you know, just to see it, I don't know if you can make copies and so we can.
I can, yes.
Maybe look at it, take it up to the end of the meeting if we want to, or.
Commissioner Mays.
Because if we could vote on the motion for the agenda, if we're gonna keep, which I'm good with the discussion, I'm just.
Yeah, this vote now is just to add, add it as an agenda item, so we can vote on it. Any other discussion on adding, adding this to the agenda? Alright, let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one no, motion passes. So now we'll need a, we would need a motion to approve the.
This has been approved by Jay, the law director, and Jay, do you see any problem with this agreement?
See any problems?
Yes, I mean, you approved it as far as, the only things he suggested, like I said, was to, because it crosses physical years, that.
It's gonna cross physical years and it's gonna, uh, utilize funds from another budget year. Several, probably several budget years, that's our rules. And, uh, so it's gotta be approved by county commission. Uh, this is a, a contract that was done by the school board, the term is up, I believe.
Done like Taylor, Foster.
Uh, Taylor, them did, yeah.
And just to be honest, it's not gonna, the funding, the three million funding for the school will not be crossing physical years. We, um, did a purchase order to commit those funds out of this year, so that will carry over until July or August, whenever we close.
All of them.
Yes, yes, we've already done the purchase.
The reason it couldn't, we couldn't get it done now, we have to go and do the GL surveys and everything on it before we will purchase the property. And the closing date is August the thirty-first, which is what's coming up. If everything works good, if it doesn't, then we go back, we'll add some contract for it.
Commissioner Wells.
To be clear, leave, I have the floor before that motion that Commissioner Mays made. I'll make a motion, we table this in the end of the meeting, assuming that you can get us copies up so we can look at it, just so we can be.
Sure, I have no problem with that.
Motion to.
Do you need a second, get a second? Yeah?
I was, I was thinking the commissioner's motion to table this until we come back.
Yeah, that was my tip, so.
To, so you're, you're wanting to.
Oak Ridge always beating Clinton.
So you wanna, you wanna table it, or you wanna put it at the end after, or under the law director report, or?
Um, I'll say wherever you're comfortable putting it, Chair, Mr. Chairman, just as long as we can see a copy of it in our hands.
I will, as soon as I'm done here, I'll go make a copy or make sixteen copies and, seventeen copies.
Let's put it, uh, well, let's put it under just new business, I guess, under. So that'll give, okay. Uh, Commissioner Is.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that sometime during the meeting, if we take a quick break, give, give everybody a time to look at it.
Okay, is, um, all those in favor of bringing this back up under new business later, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Last on the purchasing agenda, just a couple informational items only, the Chevrolet inmate transport bus that, from the sheriff's department. The starting bid was fifteen thousand and we had a winning bid of fifteen thousand, and also the county will receive, um, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, six twenty-five from the auction of the tourism building. Those were just two updates on the purchasing agenda. Any questions from the purchasing?
Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, real quick, Robbie, the tourism sale.
Yes, sir.
I assume that will go in front of budget first and then budget. In terms of how those funds are dispersed?
Um, before they can ever be dispersed, they will, if, when we receive the funds, we'll receipt them in a revenue code for both. We're waiting on Jay's, um, opinion on how they can be split, and, um.
I think Jay has given an opinion on that.
He said it could be, but I don't think we've gotten the final numbers.
I guess my question would be, is, at what point does commission make that determination?
That's how, I mean, I can bring it to budget committee and commission, sure, before it's ever, I mean, anything, we, we'll have to receive the money, cause we only have three business days by law.
When will you get that money?
I'm not sure when the closing is, at all. I don't know, I'll have to check on that and I'll let you know.
Oh, I was just making sure that we were following, that was the course of action.
I mean, it should be in, it was sold in this physical year and the money, we have, we don't close our physical year till August the fifteenth. So, um, the money will be received in this year, but I will bring it to budget committee and we can move, I mean, anyway, we, you know, commission sees it.
Commissioner Foster.
I'm just asking a question, cause I thought when we sold it, we approved that with the motion to sell it, that we divided based on the law director's opinion, right? So I guess I'm asking what, for Commissioner Mays, what's he needing?
Well, I think the law director gave some, who gave commission some discretion in terms of maintenance and other things that have been done to the building. So I think it would be just a, you know, we'd probably, I would imagine, just speaking for me, would lean on Robbie to determine kind of what that number is and, um, and then we just go from there, but, but I, I didn't see it as a black and white, uh, percentage.
That's correct. I think Robbie's done most of the work as far as expenses and maintenance, and, uh, if you don't have that, those numbers in front of you, slightly, production committees in this place, like the.
Sure, I'd be happy to bring them in.
Motion to.
Refer to the budget.
Refer this to budget committee? Got this, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of referring to budget, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, any other purchasing questions? Okay, moving on to the budget agenda. The cash and fund balance report for ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The general fund, unassigned fund balance, nine million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six sixty-six. Total fund balance, fifteen million, five seventy-six, two twenty-six, for, and cash is at twenty million, fifty-four thousand, five sixty-five. The school department committed, uh, fund balance, eight million, six hundred and seventy-seven, eight ninety-five. Cash, eighteen million, eight forty-five, one forty-two. The American Rescue Plan Fund One Twenty-One, cash, nine million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Any questions on the fund balance report for, um, ending May?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I'm looking at the school fund, I, just curious, is the capital fund balance included in that fund balance of eight million?
No, sir, it's, uh, Fund One Seventy-Seven, the second from the bottom. It's got a total fund balance of four, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, three seventy-seven.
Thank you for pointing that, I appreciate it.
The general fund is one seventy-one, and the schools is one seventy-seven.
Commissioner Is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, on the ARP funds, nine million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven.
That's cash, yes.
That, that's cash.
That's just cash in the bank, yes, sir.
Okay, so is any of that committed to anything, or is that?
A lot of that's committed to, yeah, several things on that, I give you, I, I'll get to, I have a report after the sales tax report discussing the ARP projects, so, um, I can report on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other cash and fund balance questions? Okay, really quickly, the sales tax report for April of twenty-three. The county as a whole, four million, four point two million, up six percent from last April, and Anderson County's portion was at five percent, at five hundred and forty-two thousand, three nineteen. So good numbers for April in sales tax. In your, in your report on the ARPA projects, I gave you, I updated this report from the budget committee to list items that had been approved in the, um, last budget meeting. The, um, last two, number twenty-six and twenty-seven, were both approved, the four hundred and sixty thousand for the EMS budget, and the three seventy-nine, that does, I mean, depending on approval, county commission, but I just wanted you to see that out there. We also made the change on three point one, that used to be for the Highland Communication, that used to be two hundred and fifty thousand. We've now review, reduced that to twenty-five thousand, and of that, seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six eighty-four has been spent, with, um, seventeen thousand still committed in a PO, but I don't think that would quite be seventeen, we'll still have some more of those funds coming back. But what's left under revenue loss, two million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven thirty-five eighty-three, and other eligibilities, one million, seven thirty-seven, seven sixty-three, for a total of four million, one ninety-three, four ninety-nine, sixty. So we have projects committed at ten million, seven fifty-eight, five hundred and seventy-four, expended to date, five million, nineteen thousand, eight fifty-eight, with five million not expended, so, any questions on this report?
Commissioner Jaeger, yes. I have a question on a couple of them that we haven't had updates for a while, one is witness rooms. Do we have any idea what's going on there?
We do, the mayor actually talked about this week, and I'll let her give that report.
Okay, and the chimes too, while you're at it, Mayor. The chimes.
The chimes, uh, oh, gosh, I, I forgot, um. So Roger on the chimes is, um, trying to arrange a meeting between the vendor and the electrician, but they are ready to be, the, let me text her to refresh my memory, because Leanne's been managing that one in terms of when they show up, but they're ready to be delivered and, or the, the up, the upgrade to make all that happen. So, uh, the witness rooms today was the walkthrough on the clerk portion, and so they started moving today, they'll get moved over the next few days. Um, you see the dumpster out front, that will begin, uh, the demolition on that side in order to do the archives. So we're probably looking at witness rooms beginning in a month or five weeks.
Okay, great.
Yes, and I'll try to, I'm sorry, it's like, it's a lot right now and I can't, uh, she told me it was happening and I just don't remember the specific details on those chimes. For what? Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, the chimes were approved, he was.
Yeah, we have a PO that looks like two are already taken before.
Yes, yeah, we had to pay, we had to do a deposit on the front side, yeah. This is, I just wanna make sure I'm not stealing your stuff.
Any other questions on the ARPA projects?
Yeah, Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, on the witness rooms, I see that there's six hundred and thirty-seven thousand that have not, that has not been expended. Do you foresee that project being any more than the three seventeen, or, I mean, the three eighty-one? Or have we just not been billed for some stuff? Just curious if there's a bunch of savings there, it looks like there could be. Uh-huh.
I think that's county clerk witness room and archives relocation, all three of those for that combined. So I, we, we'll be spending five.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I got excited, I.
Yes, yes. So, and they, and they have not billed, in fact, I was just looking, um, it's, they submitted their last invoice on May fifth. And so I kinda made a note to self if I don't get another pay application from them on the first of July to reach out, you know, so that it doesn't fall too far behind in terms of keeping up with what they're, they're tracking, so.
That should, I'll have them add county clerk to that, so that, that's kinda misleading, that should say county clerk on that line ten also, cause they're probably the biggest expense of the, for the, you know, the project.
Commissioner Foster.
Sorry, Mayor, I need you to sit back down. Uh, do you have any update on the, uh, water assessment, the countywide assessment? Any update on that?
Um, I just reviewed everything on, your, the, um, the water assessment, right? Water sewer. So I just reviewed, um, the draft, I have set up a meeting, I reached out, um, and I apologize, I can't remember the date, we're having a meeting with all the utilities, cities and the county, um, and ACWA, and showing them the results. So that is, that's finalized, and we're gonna sit down, uh, it's actually pretty, really pretty neat, so, um, it shows everything, you know, every piece of infrastructure that's in the county water sewer. Um, you can drill down, even put fire district overlays in there, you can pull up every fire hydrant. You can, uh, look at the manhole covers, and depending on the level of depth that each utility had, you can also, for instance, click and see, um, like, for instance, Norris, there, if you pull up, um, you know, their plant, it actually has the original blueprints that are on there. I mean, it's just going to be a one-stop shop, uh, for what's going on in the county in terms of infrastructure. And then, uh, now that that is complete, we're, um, I had Randy approve today the, um, proposal for the Claxton, so we will get on, we'll start that now that that master plan is finished and that will kick off. Yeah, it's, I, I think we're meeting maybe second week in July or something like that. Yes, yeah. Sure.
And then on the cost, um, I'm assuming we'll give another bill and have it finished up, it looks like we've only spent about half of it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we spent forty-one, we're expecting more bills coming in.
Yes, yes, yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you. Robbie, you mentioned the Highland funds, right? And it was originally two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, we're now listing those at twenty-five.
Right, so where does the excess funded budget, so the other two hundred plus thousand, whatever, where, where, where does that go now?
It goes back into the revenue loss or the other eligibilities, whichever one we pulled it from. If we ever return any money, we return it back to the category that it was pulled from, at the top.
So that's in that four, four million?
It's in the four million, one ninety-three, four ninety-nine, but I think that came from revenue loss, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I would have to ask, um, John, um, Prince or Grant's coordinator, but, um, I may be wrong, but I think that went back in the revenue loss.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the projects? Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on to the amendments. Group two appropriations from the school department, there are two, thirty-four and thirty-five, seeking approval as a group individually, or I can answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve as a group. Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Group three transfers from the school department. Um, there are thir, four, thirty, thir, thirty through thirty-three, seeking approval as a group, or individually.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group four appropriations, non-school, there are thirteen of them, thirty-six through forty, forty-four through forty-seven, and fifty-seven through sixty. Can take them as a group, individually, pulling you out if you'd like.
Oh, we, we'll do it after.
Oh, okay, got it. Motion to approve by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had, uh, went to a meeting with the legislators last week, and they were talking about new funding from the state for the Highway Department. Was that three million?
Yes, and that actually is in the budget packet. We approved that last budget meeting, to put in the new budget.
Yeah, that's great. So, it's additional funding from the state.
That's correct, three point two million.
Thank you.
Okay, group five appropriations that affect the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There are three of those, forty through, forty-one through forty-three, seeking approval as a group or individually.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and group six transfers, non-school, there are nine, forty-eight through fifty-six, seeking approval as a group, or happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve as a group by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under Section A, there were two grants that, um, we were seeking approval to, um, their grant application. One, the first one is from the Library Board, um, Norris Library for, um, four thousand, sorry, two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Um, it is for...
We got the LSD.
Technology grant, I'm sorry, I couldn't find that on here. It's right here, technology grant. I want to take these separately, because we took them separately in, uh, Budget Committee. I'm just seeking approval for this, uh, grant application. That doesn't mean they have the grant yet, we're just, this is just to apply for the grant.
Motion by Commissioner Mays for approval, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Okay, under, um, the next grant is from the Highway Department. It's for thirty thousand dollars. It's a six thousand dollar county match with a twenty-four thousand dollar grant for, as a, develop a safety action plan for our roads. This action plan can then be used to apply for the other portion of this grant, which we did have on the agenda, but we took off, but this is to develop a safety action plan, a grant to, um, that would pay for that.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Under Section B, the new twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, I'm just going to, um, the, actually, the Budget Committee has completed the budget process, and as you all know, we have a meeting Thursday on the twenty-second to, um, host the public hearing and, um, seek approval from the commission, full commission for the county budget. But this is what we accomplished last budget meeting. I don't need any votes on, don't have to have any votes on this, this is for information only. But the first item we took up was the state aid highway system program funding. We added this to the budget. The county will receive three million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the pla, from the state, and the Highway Department matches sixty-six thousand, one sixty-six, for a total of three million, three hundred and eight thousand, two ninety-three. And that motion was made by Commissioner Beauchamp and submit, seconded by Commissioner Wells to, um, refer to the county, Anderson County Board of County Commissioners. The second thing we did was approve two grants, a sixty thou, sixty-seven thousand dollar domestic violence court coordinator grant and an evidence-based programming grant of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five twenty-three. Neither have matching for the county in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Number three, we approved the Fund Two Sixty-Three budget. And in number four, we approved the, um, tourism budget for twenty-three, twenty-four as presented, with a budget deficit of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. A motion was made by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp to, um, include a five percent pay increase for all county employees outside of the sheriff's departments, uh, which already has received other raises in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Also, um, after much discussion, the EMS budget was approved with inclusion of a five percent pay increase and, um, to allocate four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in ARP funds to help address the EMS budget. Any questions on the budget, the portion of the Budget Committee agenda?
For everybody at home, the public hearing is at five?
It's at six o'clock Thursday.
That's the, that's the meeting to vote to pass, right?
That's the public hearing starts at six.
Oh, it starts at six.
And then the County Commission meeting will be right after that.
Be right after that, okay.
Under Section C, the senior center kitchen renovation, it was referred back to the Budget Committee from County Commission last month. Mayor Frank opened a discussion to revisit the alternatives and scope of work for consideration. The motion was made by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, and passed to refer to the Anderson County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval to allocate up to an additional four hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty for all of the alternate projects for the senior center kitchen renovation. I will need a vote on this.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I apologize in this Budget Committee meeting. Um, Robbie, uh, I guess what I'd like to know is, we allocated, like I said in the past, I can't remember, a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the kitchen first time, or?
Yes, then a hundred and fifteen, six twenty-eight.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I guess what it sounds like is the body decided to go ahead and fund this four hundred-plus thousand to do all of the upgrades recommended, or is it half of them, or?
That, they, the motion was for all of the upgrades recommended.
So, how, how do we ensure the kitchen gets done first? Because I don't want to wait for five other projects when we've been waiting on a kitchen for, seems like, two years. So, I'm going to vote no on this motion unless I get affirmation that the kitchen will be done first in the four hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm assuming that with, this is passed, this will be a, um, an add-on to the construction project, and would that have to go through purchasing, Mayor, no?
It is all, it would all be one contract. So, what we did when we went out to bid is, um, we added, the primary goal was the kitchen, and then there were alternates for bidders to, um, bid on. So, it's not going to be separate projects or separate contractors. It would be all one contract, one, and we can certainly request that they start with the kitchen.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, Robbie, in that contract, what does it say about change orders?
Oh, these, these, so we haven't even, um, executed the contract yet. What Catherine did is, um, we had to get the additional funding, and so she did the notice of award. Then they were getting the permit, and that's where they are. They're working on the contract documents. So, what I would notice them would be to add those alternates to your contract. So, it's not, it's not even gone to J yet for review. It's not a change order.
Okay, I'm, well, I'm talking about in the contract, because we got into this on the DRC building before, and we thought there wasn't going to be any, you know, we paid for them to look at it and say, this is what it's going to cost, and then it was, it went over. Uh, but I just want to make sure, just like Commissioner Wondell said, that the.
Yep.
Kitchen's taking care of, you know, it's the primary target.
So, what I did is, when you, after you all, um, voted, we can't do a contract unless the appropriation is there. That would be outside of the process, outside of authority, and, and, um, so what I did was notify them that only the kitchen portion, so that's what they went and started working on, because they have to do a building permit with the City of Clinton, and they have to go through that process. So, it, whatever you all approve tonight, I will just say, add alternate, you know, two, three, to that full contract. So, it'll all be one thing, yeah. And change orders, I mean, um, you know, I don't want to jinx it, because we've not gotten to the, to the third floor. Um, you all did authorize, like, one change order on the Archives Clerk project, where we had an opportunity to abate asbestos or cover over it, and the commission said, let's just go ahead and get, you know, get it cleaned up once and for all. I would always bring that to you all for something like that. But this would be part of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
One last question. Is there going to be a timeline on this one? I mean, I mean, based on what the mayor said, can't really get a contract unless you have the funds assigned. Well, we did that the first two times, we assigned the funds. And for whatever reason, the cost went up, out of your control, and all the changes, couldn't get equipment, all, and I'm sure I'm missing some, but... So, we did that the first time. Now, here we are doing it again, and now we're going to put another four hundred in, so now we're going to be up to six hundred thousand, roughly. I mean, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but, you know, I'm all for the seniors, but it seems like we keep, um, putting money in, but we don't see any, any action. I mean, and Mayor, I may be wrong, and I'm, I'm all ears.
Uh, well, once they're, once the contract is executed and we have, um, we have a legal document, that's the notice to proceed. Notice to proceed starts the clock ticking. Under the contract terms, um, Jenkins and Stiles is sixty days to complete. And that's what they submitted in their bid, so.
All, all, all the projects?
That's what they put in there, yes. They were actually, um, Jenkins and Stiles said sixty, GCE said a hundred and twenty, and Holston Construction Services estimated ninety-one. And of course, there are, you know, scenarios, for instance, if you do, um, you know, if there's, um, some kind of natural disaster or something that truly warrants an extension, then that also has to be agreed upon by the architect and the client. You know, as a legitimate, give them an extra day or give them extra two days.
Thank you. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. And as this money's approved, and then you'll bring the contract back to purchasing in full commission?
I don't think, uh, it's a sixty day. It wouldn't need to come back, um, because this did go out to bid, but it would have to get the law director's review. Um, and as long as the appropriation's there, and it's less than a year, then the, the details of the con, I mean, it'll be your typical I, uh, is it IAI? II?
AI.
AIA contract, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under Section D, the Claxton EMS location, which was referral commission, no action was ta, taken after much discussion. Um, there was talk of forming another committee for EMS, and I think that is something that they're really considering down the road. Um, Section E, the industrial park infrastructure that Mayor Pink, Mayor Frank added to the agenda, um... I just, I just, um, asked the Budget Committee to let me and Mayor Frank get together and work on some, um, funding possibilities for this project and bring it back to the Budget Committee next month, or in a later month. So, no action was taken there. Under Section F, this will also need approval. Finance, uh, presented a request from Judge Bowling to allocate eleven thousand, twenty-three dollars in ARP funds to purchase, uh, new office furniture for the courtroom. We already have the allocation on the, um, ARP projects. Earlier in the year, we, um, allocated forty thousand dollars for other capital outlay requests, and we still have, um, several thousand of that, of those, um, of that funding available. It, it came out of there, but I just wanted commission's approval before, uh, committed those funds.
Commissioner Wondell.
I'm going to go back to item D. Commissioner Mays, are you on D, or are you coming?
No, I, I, I wanted to.
I'll come back. I would defer to Commissioner Mays, so we can stay on task.
I'll connect with that.
I would like to make a motion on item F, that we, um, that we pay for it out of the, the fund balance and not out of the ARP funds. I know that we have a lot on there for capital projects, and I guess some.
I can make another, I mean, I can pay for it out of the One Seventy-One Capital Projects Funds as well, when we have four hundred thousand.
To me, it's just, I'm good with it, and I think we should approve it, but it just doesn't seem like an ARP project to me. And so, that's why I would make a motion to approve it out of another.
Commissioner Mays, if you'll push the motion button, I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to, uh, pay for item F out of, once.
I initially said the general fund, but I'm open to amending to, uh, the One Seventy-One, but.
The capital projects, that, I mean, we could take care of it in that. I could get a PO for a purchase order tomorrow to them, and...
You're okay with that? Uh, Commissioner Foster.
So, I just need clarification. So, the, the funds that are in ARP that we designated for courthouse renovations for the judges, with that lower, we took that forty thousand in budget from that code that was already designated for that. So, would, if, and I guess based on this motion, would that, that forty thousand we designated for ARP would go back into that lump sum, but that, we still designated and.
What the designation was back when all, we did several of them at one time, there was forty thousand dollars set aside. Ten thousand dollars were, Judge Layton had came before the Budget Committee and made a request to set aside ten thousand dollars for the new judges for office furniture, other things, et cetera. So, we, that was part of the forty thousand. The other thirty was just for some, some, we get a lot of smaller capital outlay requests, so, like this one. So, that's why we set, we put forty thousand in there. It wasn't specifically for the judges, it was for any capital outlay request from the county, you know, possible smaller. And we would just probably leave that forty thousand in there, and Kate, I mean, we always take budget capital requests later, after we've kind of settled with the full budget, we'll come back in like August or September and look at capital requests. We've already filled most of those because of the ARP funds with the purchase of EMS and sheriff vehicles for two years. So, a lot of them are smaller after that, so that's why we, uh, set aside the forty thousand dollars.
And to be clear, we're, it's only the One Seventy-One.
This is, um, that was the motion, yeah. I was just answering his question about the four.
Right, now, I was just making sure we're okay about it.
Commissioner McCamey.
It's definitely capital. So, why does it matter whether we take it out of the left pocket or the right pocket? I mean, it's, it's a capital, and it's coming out of capital fund, right?
The motion from Budget Committee was the ARP funds, but I suggested that, just because we had the smaller capital requests, that forty thousand dollars set aside for that. I'm fine with it coming out of One Seventy-One, and I'm also okay with. I'm fine with it coming out of one seventy-one and I'm also okay with it coming out unassigned. It's.
Okay, but the forty thousand was, did it come from ARP funds?
Yes.
And that was the recommendation of the budget committee?
That was. The eleven thousand come from that forty, yes.
And now we're changing that? I mean, that's the motion.
That's the motion, but, but no, it's not what you want to do.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think I've had this, you know, conversation with Commissioner Jaeger as well, back before commission change. We talked about how all this ARP money was supposed to be spent for infrastructure and return on investment and things of that sort. Uh, and that's why I favor taking it from a different code from that because there are some things coming up that we, you know, we could do with solid waste and some other things, you know, and that, that thing's dwindling and I get people from, you know, volunteer fire departments won't know how this is going to be funded. They're not even sure if they're even going to have a contract for, uh, fire trucks, you know, got concerned there. So I just think that, you know, we're spending the ARP money just for things other than what it was supposed to be done. Back years ago when there are different presidential administrations, money was put out and it's supposed to be used for infrastructure and, and it didn't. And, and it failed, you know, it just failed nationwide. So I, I guess that's where I'm coming from on that. You know, I support, you know, the purchase. I just think that we need to really buckle down with our four million nine hundred thousand dollars we got left to make sure for infrastructure and those return on investment in. You know, back years ago when we didn't have, you know, two nickels to rub together and we had to talk about what we were going to buy uh, out of some of this money and because it was paying a high interest on it, it was computers and things like that that was going to be, it was going to be going away in five years and we're still paying interest on those computers. So, you know, that, that's where I'm coming from on that.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. This is to take it out of one seventy-one. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
There was, there you go. Fourteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next two items under new business were twenty-nine A and B, which were just transfers and have already been approved by the budget committee. And under old business, um, there was a request to approve allocating three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five fourteen ninety-two in ARP funds as the county's matching portion of the recently awarded TDEC non-competitive water project grant. Commissioner Foster made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp, to pass to refer to the act and award county commissioners for approval. So I need that approval as well.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where, where, where would these funds be used? Do we have it earmarked?
This is the TDEC water grant that's in addition to the ARP, ARP funds and the, and we, remember when we did the resolution for the cities to get a certain portion and ACWA would get the majority of the funds? They will be do, using it for projects, water projects that they are funding or not funding, but their projects. The mayor could probably explain this a lot better.
The, uh, the contract was also in the purchasing agenda for that. And that is the one where, uh, we were eligible for five million extra dollars from TDEC through their ARP funds. And you all authorized giving each of, uh, the municipalities a share of that to be their own projects. And then the remainder will go, um, to projects that, um, I think you all approved that as well, um, through, through commission for ACWA.
But not, but not necessarily the pro, we don't know what the projects are yet.
On?
I, I haven't seen it. I apologize. I'm just trying to catch up.
So I think there's, um, I can distribute all of that, um.
I'm going to support it. I just, I just like to have a breakdown of what is intended to be used for in the county and our district. So we have a good idea where it's going to be used, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also, um, for Commissioner Jaeger's question, um, I heard back from Leanne. So on the chimes, the equipment is here and then Roger is trying to schedule a time for the electrician and the tech for, from the vendor to be here to discuss what has to be done for the required electrical upgrades in order to operate the control system. And then once the upgrades are completed, the control system can be installed and then they will show us how to operate the chimes.
That total TDEC grant is three million seven ninety-five one hundred and forty-nine dollars. So it's a pretty large grant.
Great. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's all I have tonight. Any other questions?
Thank you. We'll move on to the operations report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Palmer made a motion of a strategic planning workshop in October and come back to July operations meeting with a date, a facilitator and other information, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mays made a motion to create the opioid settlement stewardship task force consisting of six members, three from operations committee and three from budget committee, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Varen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Isbell made a motion to approve to go ahead with the groundwork for the length of service agreement and all details will be worked out between fire commission and full commission, seconded by Commissioner Varen. Motion passed forward to full commission with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Oh, sorry. It's over here studies.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Commissioner Anderson made a motion to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday for the county, removing one holiday. We're having a floating day to keep the total county holidays at thirteen, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me apologize to my fellow commissioners for not doing my homework on this issue. I should have, but I have been asked by several employees, uh, they remember when this idea came up, uh, I think a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, uh, and the idea was we were going to replace one of the July fourth holidays with this holiday. Uh, and as I read that, is, is that the intention with this motion or to add another holiday to the calendar already? To replace one of the July fourth? I have employees who object to that, who have brought that to my attention. Uh, so, um, I'll go ahead and let, uh, Commissioner McCain speak because he always seems to have some good ideas on these issues. But I think one of my suggestions would be maybe refer it to the HR committee or something to see, uh, if they can find out from employees. There's not going to be a rush on this considering today is Juneteenth and this probably wouldn't go into effect until next year. If we're not in a rush to do that, I think we should solicit the opinions of the employees before we push that. If we go to a vote on this tonight, I'll be a no vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCain.
Yeah, um, if motion is to replace one, then I'll be a no vote also. I don't know how many commissioners remember, but at one time we gave that extra, the thirteenth day in lieu of the pay raise. If we had given a pay raise, that would carry on forever. And I feel like this thirteenth needs to carry on forever. We're taking something away from it and just replacing it with something. But, you know, that thirteenth day that we gave them was in lieu of the pay raise that year because we were strapped for money and couldn't give any raises. So we gave them an extra holiday because we felt that it wouldn't really cost the county anything because, you know, there's no way to be in pay for that to be there working. So I'll be opposed to it also.
Commissioner Foster.
So it, it says one holiday or a floating day, so the courthouse will be open on Juneteenth if we approve it? Like it, it just says or a floating day to keep the county total, so I just didn't know how that discussion went in operations on. The flo, I know there's two days at July fourth, so are we removing all of those to be closed on the nineteenth? I guess the floating day is what's, I got, need clarification.
It, it was and/or either, you know, either to replace it or make it a floating holiday. And I'm sure that Chairman Anderson remembers probably and Commissioner White. Probably three or four years ago, Commissioner Scott brought this up and we had, you know, a lot of discussion about it and making it, you know, making it a floating holiday. They could either take Juneteenth or the July day. So I think that's where that, uh, debate came from.
Commissioner Beauchamp.
Uh, yeah, I had to ask Jay to bring this up because what we ran into is we had a court docket set for today. And our district attorney and our public defenders are state employees and they got today off because Governor Bill Lee had signed that into effect. So we had to cancel a whole court docket and it kind of messed everything up. Cases were set and things like that. So I had asked, uh, the law director to bring that to commission so we could kind of figure out what we're going to do because those employees do get off. And we kind of consider them county employees, but they really are state employees, but they're here every day that we're here working. So I'd like to kind of figure it out because of the court system. We schedule court days, they're off. So that's what I was looking at in that sense is it brought it to my attention in, in that manner.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, uh, establishing this holiday, but I like the idea of referring it to, uh, personnel and, and get some input from our staff. I think that was your motion or wasn't it, Commissioner, or your thought?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Varen.
Yes, uh, I, I think that if we don't give the day off to the county employees for being disingenuous, we're, we're honoring a holiday, but we're not honoring a holiday. So, I mean, you know, I think that, uh, most of the county employees only got a five percent raise this year. And I think that with the turnover rate that we've got and everything like that, I think we ought to give them another day off. I mean, you know, that's just my opinion. I'll.
Commissioner Palmer.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I'm not sure, but you brought up that we gave the employees that holiday that year. Did we take it back? Was it taken back or was always given?
They tried to take it back two or three different times and I always object to it because I have to remind them this was given in lieu of a raise.
Okay, alright.
And it should continue forever, the thirteenth day. I'm all in favor of adding this as a holiday to make it fourteen.
Okay.
Because we're always talking about retention and one of the things that causes people to work, to work for Anderson County is because of our benefits.
Right.
And it doesn't cost the county anything if we close the courthouse day for that day, so, you know.
Alright, I have a figure here of about eighty thousand dollars is what it would cost to add a holiday. That, because we would pay, be paying them their salary, correct?
Right, but it's already in the budget. We just closed the courthouse that day and they get a day off. It doesn't cost us anymore. I mean, they're not getting double pay for that day. They're just getting paid for the day that the courthouse is closed. So it's really not costing us anything to give an extra day. But I strongly object to taking the one back that we gave them in lieu of a raise.
Okay, so it, and it's my understanding that the motion was to, um, use that fourth of July or make it a floating holiday. So they could choose to keep, they would keep what they've got. It's just they could take it at the fourth or they could take it on Juneteenth, correct? Is that, that was our understanding from operations?
Yeah, I think, I think so. I think the end, and to keep it, keep the holiday total at thirteen. I think there was some hesitancy at operation to go to the, to go to fourteen.
Okay, I am, I, just a couple of things here. So there are eleven federal paid holidays. Um, we have thirteen. Um, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the private sector gets eight paid holidays. I understand that, you know, we, we need to compare apples for apples. And so not all of the, um, private sector, you know, that may include upper management, whatever. So we need to be sure that we compare apples to apples. Um, county employees also get three personal days per year and one sick day per month. So, um, just to kind of have all the information out there when we make a decision to add a fourteenth holiday. That is right at almost three weeks of holiday. Um, just for information purposes. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
I'd be voting no for this for various reasons, but I do like the idea of it being referred back for feedback from, uh, different people in HR. So I'd be voting no for this.
Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, the, the, is Commissioner Jaeger's motion for approval of what was done in operations?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, and just for clarification, and I don't know if you need to state this in the motion, but I think, just to clarify, it was like Commissioner Palmer said, they can still take off that second day in July if they want to. The courthouse will just not be closed on the nineteenth. The way that the motion is, as is right now, correct? We're just, we're recognizing the holiday, but we're not closing the doors of the courthouse. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That will not be set until, like, we'll vote on that in August or September. Is that correct? The holiday's.
When we set the holiday.
That's when the courthouse will be closed, as a body.
Okay, I just want to.
Well, what it would actually do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that if, if you do it that way, the courthouse will be open that extra day in July instead of being closed two days in a row. That opens that back up because they can use it either or.
And I would just, I'm good with referring it back to HR, but, um, I'd bet you all a hundred dollars that I know what they're going to say to add the fourteenth day. So I don't know if we want to kick this down the road again, thirty days to hear what the obvious answer is going to be.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Isbell, did you?
No, I did, yeah, there's some.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you for letting me speak twice, Mr. Chairman. Another consideration we need to think of is jail officers don't have the choice of which holiday they can take off. If their schedule is they wind up working on both of these days, then we're going to have to pay them double time for eight hours of that. So that will increase the budget. Patrol division same way, EMS is the same way. Uh, I appreciate the effort of the courthouse being closed and being open, but there are some county departments that never close, so.
Such as EMS.
Such as EMS and the sheriff's office and, and all that, so, um, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Commissioner McCain on this. Uh, unless we want to add that fourteenth holiday on there and we'd have to get with Robbie, I guess, to find out how much that would increase budgets for the departments that would have the double time and, and all that. Uh, I'd still be a no vote on it, but, uh, I pushed the button actually to say this. I would make a motion for this to be referred to the HR committee.
Motion to refer to the HR committee.
Is that, is that an amendment or is that just a census referral?
It takes precedent.
Okay, that's what I thought.
We have a second. We got a second by Commissioner Isbell. Any, uh, Commissioner Wells.
Could we still, could you add in that that we will recognize the Juneteenth holiday tonight and refer the holiday schedule back to HR?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm confused on what we're doing.
So we still have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we still has the county have to recognize the Juneteenth holiday officially. Why don't we decide they get a day off or not? Is that, am I incorrect in that?
Director Jaeger, is that the case? We have, we have no choice?
We've got a national holiday that was approved two years ago, three years ago, and the governor approved the state holiday in May. So, that's why we've got all our state officers closed. That's what Commissioner Bocham was referring to. Boards are closed. We don't have the DA, public defender, judges, except the general sessions, the juvenile court. That's all holiday for them. So, that's, was the issue she was trying to explain. But, it is a national holiday and it is a state holiday.
Does the county have to make it a county holiday?
No, you don't have.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm leaving them.
Commissioner Isbell.
The, the way the motion was made was to keep it at thirteen, was not to add a fourteenth. The motion that was approved out of operations.
Any other discussion on referring to, to HR committee? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
No.
One, two, two opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Operations Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Isbell. Next, we'll move to Director Schools, Dr. Parrott. Any questions?
Yeah, I thought we'd take a break after we get through the committee reports and then we can read and come back for new business.
Any questions for Dr. Parrott? Mr. Yeager.
Dr. Parrott, what's the third grade situation going to do to you? The third grade retention deal.
At this point, we were in the top twenty-five percent of third grade scores. We had a total of, just have to have some numbers here for you. We had a total of a hundred and forty-eight students that took the retest and thirteen of those moved on up to the meets or exceed. So, we had sixty-three third grade students that got an appeal and then that was a total of about forty-five students that had to go to camp. So, at this point right now, we have two students that we've not been able to get a hold of the parents. So, those two are the only ones that are in danger of being retained.
Okay.
So, everything else, we've got about two hundred and eighty students K through five that are in summer's camp and then about sixty-three middle school students that are in camp right now.
That's pretty good then.
Yes, yes. We're very excited about our scores.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, any updates on the softball field?
The softball field settlement agreement was signed last week. We are working with the city to secure building permits and have to do some work on the construction entrance and everything like that, but we're moving forward on all that stuff.
Do you envision it being ready for next season?
Oh, I, yes, yes, we're, we're working, we're going to start just as soon as, we've got everything in place with purchase orders to do the grade work. We've got to do quite a bit of grade work because we're moving it forty feet and the lights and everything like that. So, there's some cost involved to it, but it's what's best for the students.
Thank you for the update. And then the schools, so we're, the new school in Claxton, just a quick update.
So, where we're at on that, we have, there was a lot of stuff on this contract that you all are going to approve. It went through three lawyers and Christie Hicks and it took about six days to get the contract to buy it. It wasn't just, I want to buy it, here's the price because there's so many things that we had to have in that to make sure that if you couldn't build a school there, we could get out of it. And so, that's what this is all about and that's why it was moved on out to August thirty-first. The other thing was, the reason we moved it is we did not want to take over a building that had an occupant in it. They have a daycare in there and then they have another group in there that does some kind of therapy. So, from the time we signed the contract, it was ninety days. And so, they gave them the ninety day notice so it would be vacated. And they've been over there doing the core drilling. We've, we've not heard any bad news or anything like that, so we believe that everything will be on track. We just didn't want to have to come back. That's the reason we got a purchase order, didn't want to have to come back and start everything over again. So, that's why we've, that contract goes into next year.
Then how soon would you think after the purchase or when you go to purchase, will we have some artist renderings of entrances, Xs?
We, we've, we've started working on some of that stuff right now. We're still in the planning stages with that because we want to really look at solar energy. We want to look at geothermal for the heat and air and things like that. So, once we get that down and get how many of those, then we'll start having some public meetings and things like that. The, Michael Brady right now is, we're, we're trying to finish up the project at Norris right now. It's getting close. And then we, we're right in the middle of the project at Clinton High School with the ag and welding shop. So, that's kind of, we're trying to do them in order. It's just a lot on the plate. So, we, and, you know, you only get a chance to build a school one time. We want to make sure we've done it right. So, we've had some of those preliminary meetings with ESG and some things like that. So, that's kind of.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was at the Norris Common Concert they had a week ago and I had several people ask me about this and, you know, their impression, it's a very good buy, you know, that you've done. And I hope I didn't speak out of line, but I said that you were going to actually build on to the building and say you're not going to do the work.
Yes, yes, they, the, that building is about a third, I mean, about a fourth of what we need. So, it, it's twenty thousand square feet and a six hundred person school is about eighty thousand square feet, yes. And, and I, I give kudos to the mayor. She had a meeting, set up a meeting with us for the USDA. We're looking at doing a USDA loan on the building. We will have to get a, which is crazy, we'll have to get a construction loan and then once that comes back. But, we've been working with USDA. They've already met, their consultants met with the NBI to make sure everything we're doing. And that was some of the reasons we had to get these GO reports and things like that to make sure every step of the way we're in, in right with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCamey.
Dr. Parrott, what's the total acres there?
There's a, there's right at thirty acres there.
Would there be room for an EMS station should the county elect to build one?
That, that would be up to you and the, the building people, school board. My, my only problem with this, and you do what you see fit, but every time an ambulance goes out of that place and the ambulance comes on, I would be getting calls. But, as you know, and I hope I don't speak out of turn, about two years ago, we did give, we did need more land to the Claxton Fire Department. So, they've got some other land there behind that which might be big enough to do. I think they were looking at building a whole new station. So, to me, that would be the perfect place there is the entrance and everything. But, now, we'll do whatever you all ask us to do.
Okay, do you have any information or confirmation about exiting on to?
We're, we're working on that situation.
Okay, that's a different individual.
That's a different, yes.
Okay.
Yep, Commissioner Mays is helping me with that.
Okay.
A lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, like.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrott?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have the county, county mayor, Mayor Frank.
I only have one action item tonight and then I just included the tax year 2022 pilot incentive for Oak Ridge IDB on there. The action item is requesting appointment and reappointments of positions to the E nine one one board.
Motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Brian.
Oh, I think Dr. Smallridge is locked up.
Thank you, Brian.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that's all. Just a quick note on the Oak Ridge IDB report. You'll note the high occupancy on the particular agreements that deal with occupancy for housing. So, I just thought that was kind of interesting. And that's all I have.
Questions for Mayor Frank. Commissioner Wondell.
Mayor, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'll say it again, I've said it a hundred times, I missed the budget meeting unfortunately, but I see there was discussion on the EMS station in Claxton. What I'd like to know from you is what is your vision of an EMS station located in
Like a particular location, if I could choose an ideal spot?
Oh, you could, I don't, I, I have no preference where it goes. I just want the people that myself and Commissioner Mays represent that ask us, it seems nonstop when I'm out and about, and I'm sure he gets the same questions, is how come we as a county do not want to put an EMS station in Claxton? And then, of course, we tell them we do, but when the rubber meets the road, we don't seem to get down that path. So, I, I wanted to ask you tonight, what's your thoughts? What would you or Mr. Sweet, Director Sweet, like to see in terms of Claxton? Now, what, what, what I heard last time was, well, we'll go to a twelve hour shift, a night of coverage and, you know, here's the way I look at it. If we can't cover it in eight hours, I don't know what twelve hours is going to do any different. I, I'm, I'm not an EMS guy, I can't answer that. I can only trust that. I'll put the money into that, but I still, the people in our district want to see an EMS station there. And yes, there is discussion, I just heard about putting the, putting it over there at the Claxton Volunteer Fire Department. It can go wherever we want it to go, but until we all put our hats together, it's not going to go anywhere. So, I'll be quiet and hear you.
Sure, well, it does start with, it's one of those which comes first, the chicken or the egg. We have to have the personnel first and if we build a station and we invest in a station, it will just be a station until we have personnel. So, the station location study that we commissioned with your all's approval and, and we had a meeting and I need to, I know we've got eight new commissioners. We actually, thanks to IT, we have that recorded. We can send that out to the new commissioners so that they can also see that presentation. The issue, and Nathan is better to speak on this than I am, you know, they have their recommendations based on response and that is an area where we need better response. That can be accomplished with moving a station into the South Clinton area because it all, it's all interconnected. And so, in terms of a vision of what that station looks like, Nathan and I have talked about something in South Clinton as accomplishing that goal. But, we, you know, additional personnel is the issue. And so, you know, that's where he would need to talk to you about the number of times. Like, I asked Nathan to, as I've shared with you all, Nathan, send me, you know, all real time text alerts for suicides and overdoses and I get those constantly. Well, Nathan also added me to when we're code white and that is happening a lot. You know, I can be sitting there and my phone's going, you know, because it'll tell me when it's back, you know, off, on, off, on, and they're just, it happens a lot. And then my husband's like, what is going on? And I'm like, where, you know? And then I'll reach out to Nathan, you're having a bad weekend, aren't you? Or, you know, there's a lot going on in the county. So, you know, we can try that and then also we can help by posting. We don't have to have the facility. But, I mean, if you want Nathan to come up here, I'm not as literate on this as he is in terms of the response, but to get a station, we also have to have people. If we want to man it, you know, twenty-four seven, it's a larger cost. That's why we were talking about, well, let's start with two additional personnel. Let's see how that impacts the response times and then you all be, you know, you hold our feet to the fire, you see, does it solve the problem? Does it start addressing the problem? But, it's a manpower problem.
So, we, and I appreciate it. So, we just passed four contracts that we entered to, enter into EMS with these entities, we'll call them.
Yes.
And so, we're providing them a service and we're getting paid for that service. The taxpayers seem to suffer sometimes in my district because maybe we're doing too much other services. I don't know. I, I think Nathan's done a good job and I'm not here to discredit him, but, you know, I, I just want to get an explanation on how we're going to meet the needs in District One, that's all. You want to put it in South Clinton? Hey, that's great. It doesn't have to be in the C-town. I don't care. What I, and it, it doesn't have to be a brand new facility. It could be somebody that's got a garage door that can open it up, have a place to sleep. Anybody in our district that wants to offer that up and lease it out like we do all the other places, they can pull in there. I don't, I don't see that we have to go hire more people. If that's the case, then what's that amount of money you need? Because when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at the ARP funds and it's sixteen percent of the fourteen million has gone to EMS. They deserve it, they need it. Twelve stretchers, new ambulances. We're looking at two, two million four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars that went to EMS out of budget, just ARP. But, then I voted for all that because it was needed. But, it seems like I'm not being heard when I'm telling you the, the people in my community want a station in Claxton. And when, when people lose loved ones, it gets personal. And, and, and I know the whole county's that way, but I'd like to have a solution, not just, well, we've talked about it, we're talking about South Clinton. Well, I'm talking about Claxton. And if you're telling me you can put it in South Clinton and take care of Claxton, how much do you need? Let's take the money from ARP, let's do it tonight, I'll do it. I, I just don't know how we get over the hump.
Well, you know, just kind of walking back through, you know, let's start with those agreements. We're required, if, if they are going, if we transport, they're required to have that paperwork on that side. We don't have to have paperwork for someone to call and request that we come transport a patient in need. On convalescent, you know, where we're taking someone to the hospital or to a physician or something like that, convalescent transports, those do generate revenue. But, I will tell you that those have reduced, we have reduced those numbers in, in accomplishing convalescent transport because the sheer volume of calls for emergency are up and those vehicles, we give priority to people in need. If you call nine one one, that is the priority. We're not, we're sorry, we can't come transport you, you know, to the physician, we'll help, you know, get you to another service, but our priority is the people in need. And so, I don't want anyone in Claxton to think that that's the case, that, oh, they're busy doing transports because that's generating, you know, revenue. No, that's not, that's not how that works. So, the, again, this is where Nathan would need to come share with you on the call volume. Call volume is up. It is up in Anderson County. We also have growth in Anderson County. We also are a system that in the daytime, this is where Nathan has discussed needing, you know, we believe we can make an impact with two additional people, no extra equipment during the day. You have to think during the day, we have all of these people, we are a number one employer for other counties that are coming here to work. So, we have success in generating, you know, jobs in Anderson County. We have a large industrial presence, but we're also in migrating Scott County, Campbell County, Union County, Knox County. We have Y twelve, you know, that's bringing all these folks in. We're an EMS system that's not just serving the people that live here, but also the people that work here during that workday. So, you know, that's why, I mean, it's, it's really not a cop out on the station. It's, we got. It's, we gotta have the manpower. I mean, there are other, I have been through the revenue line item with Robbie. I mean, we went through, had a piece of paper, line by line. We did find a little extra funds, and I know you said you couldn't be here, but, I mean, there's only a couple of options. You reduce, you know, something that you've already allocated, you could do ARP. You could do one time, there are, you know, we're, you set up a task force tonight for the opiate funds. There is one pool of funds that you could say, okay, we'll do a one-time this year, Nathan, you know, we'll give you that, whatever that cost of two employees is. Because those opiate funds can be used to address damages already done. In EMS, clearly, above and beyond, responds to opioid overdoses. The only way we get paid is for transport. Lots of ODs do not want transport, they refuse transport, or if they do, we're not getting paid. And, you know, we would love to be able to actually get into community paramedicine, where we could go back and knock on the door and kinda help those folks. But, there's that impact. We also under, you know, this is federal, this is a federal problem. We do not get paid for readiness. I mean, we're only paid, we are still viewed as a transportation model. And I think the public clearly views us as a medical model. And they expect care when we arrive on scene. They expect life-saving care in some instances. So, you know, we continue to try to work on that and, you know, raise awareness at the state and federal level. We're actually gonna meet with Senator Blackburn and try to, we're gonna share with her. We're bringing Jefferson County Mayor and Jefferson County EMS Director. We're gonna try to help them see the need for greater reimbursement for EMS, and the value that they provide to our system, you know, to our citizens. So, you know, I really feel strongly it's gotta start with the people. And we can work on, you know, I think Nathan would be happy to work with you all on, where can we, where can we post while we work on the physical facility?
Thank you.
Before I get Commissioner Isbell, I'm just curious, and this might be a Nathan question. How do we compare with the counties that are similar population? As far as like, do we have about the same amount of personnel and ambulances? Or, I know we're odd-shaped from Edgemore to Anderson County Park back to New River. That's not, there's not really direct routes like some counties have.
I don't have the numbers for what they have staffed, I'd have to look into that. As far as county-wide systems go, for call volume, we're the highest county system. As far as call volume goes.
And so, a lot of that's what the mayor's saying about people, just we have so many people commuting into Anderson County.
Right, well, we all, we mix in the 911, the convalescent, but, you know, we're definitely a very busy system. So, comparatively, especially around us, being much more rural, smaller population, we do have a higher call volume.
Commissioner Isbell?
Well, what I wanna do is I'll cancel and come back, because it's on a different subject. Because I think Commissioner McCamey and Commissioner Mays maybe want to talk about the ambulance thing.
Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah. We've talked several times about the fund that you all operate out of. Why are we not under the County General Fund? It's not making money per se, or that you had to have your own fund balance and all that.
Yeah, so, we're a 118 special revenue fund, and that's just where we've been assigned by this body. I know there's been some feedback in the past from C-TAS saying that it's an appropriate spot to put us, but...
But, wouldn't County General be a more reasonable one, since it's a service that's provided by the taxpayers? It's taxpayers' dollars.
I'll be honest with you, being in the general fund or 118 changes nothing about how we operate. That's all a financial decision. We follow all the same processes we would if we're in the general fund. It changes nothing in what we do, how we operate, how I do my job, it wouldn't change.
But, what about the recommendation that was voted down to assist with $600,000 this year in budget?
I don't remember all the details. I think there was a request, Robbie said up to, and then they changed the number from 600 to 450. You know, I don't think there was any discussion on adding more personnel. It was, how do we financially resolve that for the next year, as everyone's aware? Last year, we approved an unbalanced EMS budget. We're gonna be facing that going forward. So, I think that was part of the issue, okay, how do we balance the EMS budget into next fiscal year, so that when it goes before the auditors and they review, that we're in a good standing? So, they decided to use the ARPA funds. Chairman Vow will have to correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but it was assigned to use the ARPA to make it balanced for next fiscal year.
Commissioner McCamey, that was the 600, there were three proposals presented by EMS. The 600 was that mid-level proposal. And then, Commission approved the 460, the level one. So, that's what the 600 voted down was, was that second one. Yeah. So, they did ultimately approve.
What would be your recommendation as mayor on them being in a special revenue code or County General Fund? I mean, it was under County General for 27 years.
You know, to me, I know Robbie has talked to me about this, the auditors have talked to me about it. For you all, just, you know, giving you the true transparency on all of the operations, you know, like, you don't get for general fund, you know, a revenue over expenditures. You've gotta dig in and find it, and then, you know, it's just a trans, to me, it's more of a transparency, but, you know, we could still provide all of that information. Also, under general fund, so EMS is billed for various things that if you're under general fund, you don't, you're not billed for. So, because of the transparency. So, we're saying, oh, we want to see the true, absolutely everything. This is one of the, for instance, dispatch, you know. That has been something in the past that Anderson County has billed EMS for. So, it's basically the county, I mean, this is one of the things I've brought up in the past, like about EMS getting property tax. You're giving EMS property tax so that you can turn around and pay yourself back. You're giving them property tax to pay dispatch, you're giving them property tax to pay fleet service, you're giving them property tax to pay work comp. And so, it's just, it's a transparency model.
You didn't answer my question, huh?
Oh, okay.
Would you prefer general fund or special revenue?
I mean, I would lean on, I'm not the finance person.
I would prefer general fund, and I think that's where it's going. I mean, unless they're provided funding, there's no way they can support their budget in Fund 118. So, I mean, I've been trying to, we've discussed this several times lately. I've even discussed it some at Budget Committee level, but I do see, I do think that's where, I mean, in another year or two, it could make it, but I don't think it can make much longer in the 118.
Where do all the other services that the county renders come from? General Fund?
Yes.
And they're the only ones in a special revenue fund?
ACTV.
ACTV, yeah.
Yes, but it's a very small budget.
Right. But, they're, they're sort of singled out, and...
Well, we were in 205 several years ago, when they made money. Then, it went from 205 to 118. I remember when I did payroll, it was 101, I mean, you were the director then. It's been in every fund. But, I would, I mean, I think it would solve a lot of problems if it was in the general fund, as far as funding.
Right. That's my point, is with it being a special revenue, we have to take money out of County General Fund to bail them out, you know? And, you know, it's...
And audits opinion, too. There's not a lot of counties that it's in a special revenue fund anymore. Most of them are in the general fund that they audit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the Budget Committee or the Finance Committee, whichever one would be appropriate. I don't know.
To convert it to a general fund?
Yeah. Would that be Finance Committee or Budget Committee?
What'd you say, Rob? Budget?
I'd refer it to Budget Committee.
Refer to budget. Do we have a second? Motion and a second? Commissioner Mays?
It's not germane to the, I mean, it's about EMS, but not about the fund.
Do we, Commissioner Van Nigro, for Isbell, do you want to discuss this, or do you want to come, we'll come back around if you vote on the referral?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on some, a question I had.
Oh, okay.
Director Sweet said about the call volume, so...
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of referring to Budget Committee to discuss putting this in the general fund, or EMS and general fund, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner?
So, again, I just wanted to follow up on what you were, what you said about call volume. And you said we had a large call volume. So, what, where do we compare to other counties our size? What percentage are we greater or lower, or...
I'd have to take a look. I'd have to reach out to those services, try to get their numbers. I mean, that's not something that's like readily available on the internet to look up.
Okay.
So, I'd have to take some research to look that up.
Okay. So, where does the data come from that we're higher than other counties?
I just historically looking at the other information. So, some of it is looking through Comptroller's Office, looking at prior audits that they've done for other counties. Sometimes it lists their call volume in there. Sometimes it's just been in conversations. But, as far as giving you actual numbers and percentages, I'd have to sit down, reach out to those directors, try to get their numbers, and get that back to you.
Okay. So, then, how do we compare as far as personnel and equipment to other counties our size?
Again, I'd have to ask them, how many trucks they have, how many staff they have, full-time, part-time, and try to get that put together.
And then, also, I just kind of wanted to know, is there some organization or state office that has recommendations for the amount of equipment and personnel that we should have, kind of per capita?
No, ma'am.
Or, maybe even county size acreage, or, so there's nothing like that? Okay.
Not from the state level that I'm aware of.
Let me get Commissioner Mays, I cut him off.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I would just like, I would ask that the body see the expediency in this. You know, we're obviously not overnight, we're not gonna have a station, we're not gonna have personnel. However, I am, and I've been very transparent, that I am very much in favor of building a new station and finding, and funding the personnel to have this station. And of course, based on the study that, in that night, and based on the study, being in District One or as close to District One as possible. But, as we stand here tonight, we still have real needs. I mean, we still have code whites going off a lot. We still have, and I just want to remind, and this is not being negative, but I just want to remind a lot of the folks who may not know, municipalities, they have first responders in every municipality, and they're getting there quick, that are trained, and most of them are trained, maybe EMTs or paramedics. In the rural areas of this county, in particular District One, we have volunteers, but we don't have that first responder that's standing by, ready to respond. And so, when I hear about the code whites, and I hear about, and this is not a new thing at all, you guys are stretched thin. And we've got, we're voting on a budget Thursday. And what I'm concerned about is, granted, I think it's just putting, it's a small step, but it's a step. And I would like for us to consider tonight, supporting the 12-hour truck. And, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would require two personnel. However, we have the equipment to sustain a 12-hour truck from 8A to 8P, which is our highest volume of calls, is that right?
Right.
So, I want to be aggressive as it, towards a station. And this body gets to vote it up or down, but I think that that is what is needed. It may be, you know, whether it's today or long-term, let's start thinking about long-term stuff. Let's not wait until we're in dire situations again, and then be two years down, two years too late building a facility. But, I would like this body to maybe consider and look at voting for the 12-hour truck. And Commissioner McCamey made a good point in operations, and I wanted to say it was in the April operations, is that until we address, get a station and get the things that we need, is that the primary posting would be in the Claxton community. As of right now, I don't think that's been approved for the budget that's being presented on Thursday, unless I'm wrong, please correct me. But, I would just ask, again, that this body take it up and see the expediency and the need, because like Commissioner Wondell said, I mean, these are our lives. And I hate to see you guys get stones thrown at you when you're stretched thin anyway. And we have the ability to help you. And I would just ask that this body look at it and, you know, fund this request of the 12-hour truck.
So, to clarify, just not only for the commissioners, but for the people that are watching, the terminology code white is specific to Anderson County. It's often commonly called Level Zero in other agencies, other departments. That means when we have zero remaining ALS-staffed ambulances. Now, we may still have BLS-staffed ambulances, but on the ALS side, that means a paramedic and an EMT are on that. It's not an uncommon thing. If we're code white for too long and a call comes in, we may request mutual aid, it's very common. Knox County actually is our number-one requister for us to go into Knox County and answer calls, because they're overwhelmed. Roan County is the second requister that asks us, calls Anderson County, says, hey, we have an emergency holding, we have no units available, can you send an ambulance? So, it happens, not, it's not an Anderson County-specific thing. Ultimately, for us, the daytime is when we're getting hammered. We're getting hammered during the day, okay? So far this year, through May, we had 311 times that we went code white. 89% of that was from 8A to 8P. 33 times was after 8:00 PM, only twice after midnight. And one of those was at 7:30 in the morning. So, we're getting hammered during the day. That's why I made a request of adding additional resources during the day. If we can accommodate and we can start handling our daytime volume better, it could improve and have a cascading effect countywide for response times. Not just to Claxton, but also to Brasville, New River Highway, which actually has one of the longest response times that we have in the county. That's something Commissioner Vow and I, going back years, we actually met up in the community up in New River. The response time out there sometimes is 30, 35 minutes, because it's, you know, I know most of you have probably driven up there. If you haven't, it's a windy road. You just can't drive excessively fast on something, especially in an ambulance, and maintain staying on the road. There are areas and pockets of this county that have a delay. Oak Ridge has the best response time. We have two resources in Oak Ridge, but also, we go to, we transport the Methodist 75% of our call volume. The citizens of the county, the people in Oak Ridge, and all throughout the county, 75% want to go to Methodist. As soon as that truck is in service from Methodist, they're back in the system. If they're closer to a call, they're gonna take it. It doesn't matter if it's their zone or not. We do put trucks in locations. We have Andersonville, Clinton, we have up in Rocky Top, we have in Oliver... We do put trucks in locations. We have Andersonville, Clinton, we have up in Rocky Top, we have in Oliver Springs. Those trucks are not dedicated to only that community. We are an Anderson County EMS system. If, if the Rocky Top truck is the only truck available and a call comes in in Claxton, they're going. Because they're an Anderson County ambulance. Now, I've had people up in various cities say, well, that's a Rocky Top ambulance, or that's an Andersonville ambulance. Why is it going to other places? It's an Anderson County ambulance. We're here to serve the county. So I want to, if, if we pursue going and having a truck that's posting in Claxton or a station in Claxton, it is an Anderson County station. I, I don't think this body is, is suggesting that we, we don't do that, but I, that's also, again, letting the public know. You know, that's, we serve the entire county, and we'll use any available resources that we have to. Now, how does that compare to other ones? Honestly, I've looked at other services in the past. I don't, I don't camp out in a comparison mentality. I camp out in what's best for Anderson County, and how can we propel that? Now, can I learn things from other, other agencies, good and bad? Absolutely. And try to have that rapport with those other counties and other people in the industry. But I try to take a look, you know, there, you, as it said, you've seen one EMS system, you've seen one EMS system. They're, they're not, it's not a cookie cutter. You can't just drop it, hey, if it works here, it's gonna work here, no matter what. It, it's a lot to take a look at. I would love to have additional resources during the day, because that's where the call volume is at.
Commissioner Mays, do you have a motion?
I do. I would like to add to the agenda currently. I mean, I don't want to go, we can go into new business, but add the, to approve the addition to the budget, the 12-hour truck for EMS, which would be, I know Robbie has that figure, but to be paid out of the, the opioid settlement where, where we've had losses, whatever that line item is, where we've experienced the damages, I guess is the right word. And to use those, use those funds for that. I'd like to add that to the agenda so we can vote on it.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Wondell. Commissioner Smallridge?
I maybe, maybe we want to go ahead and vote. Well, let me, let me comment. I, we, I think we all received a copy of the station study that you, you sent to all the commissioners, I believe. And there were two main recommendations in that study. One was to relocate stations 1, 2, 5, and 6. Not a new station, but to relocate those so we could better serve our whole area. And then recommendation two was to relocate stations 2 and 6, and add a new station in Claxton. I don't know that we've had a, or at least I haven't, we've been party to a serious discussion of those options. And I think it's important that we do that in deciding what's the best approach when it comes to shifting stations or adding stations. And I'm not opposed to adding a station necessarily in Claxton, et cetera. But I, I just want to be sure we're looking at the big picture and doing what's best for the long run for EMS and.
Commissioner Smallridge, also to your comment there, part of, and Nathan and I continue to have ongoing conversations about this, because Oak Ridge, Rome County is actually building a new station, and Anderson County has historically served all of Oak Ridge, both Rome County and Anderson County. And so with the new preserve that's down there, you know, we've been very reluctant and hesitant about starting to truly put in place a plan, not knowing what that's going to look like. And so that's still, you know, that's going to be on Oak Ridge. And we did meet with Dr. Watson well before he, he announced his retirement, and Chief Solomon, who else did we, and Mayor Gooch. And had that discussion, kind of, we gave them a copy of the station location study, because of course Oak Ridge is gonna want to look at what's Rome County doing, what's Anderson County doing, and how do, you know, how are we going to best serve the people in our city? And so we're kind of also waiting to see what those decisions are, what Rome County's plan looks like in terms of who they're going to serve, and what their capacity to serve is. And we have to have that conversation before we pull a trigger on, okay, let's start shifting things. Because we don't want to, you know, that one plan involves shifting further down towards the west end of Oak Ridge. We don't want to do that if, you know, all of a sudden Oak Ridge or Rome County's gonna be covering that. Then we've wasted precious dollars and time, and we've improperly shifted our system, you know, in the wrong direction. So we're, we're kind of waiting on that, too.
Commissioner Val?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm gonna speak to the motion, but I'm also gonna cheat and, and give Nathan a request. If we're going to discuss the motion that was passed earlier about changing funds at the next Budget Committee meeting, is that our idea, or we want to wait until the August meeting? Well, regardless, I've got some items I would like for you to bring, and I'll be more than happy to text them to you. But I'd like the presentation you gave recently about the history of Anderson County EMS. I would like you to bring, or maybe Robbie can do this, the history of the funding. Be sure to bring the last slide that had a picture of Director McCamey. I definitely want that one brought, when you, when you bring it.
He was the best dressed EMS director.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Robbie, I'd like to know the history of the funding of EMS. You were talking about all the different codes that they were under. Bring those, and I know you'll have a good explanation of each of those. Rob, Robbie, or Mayor, or Nathan, whichever one, the audit that we paid to have done a few years ago, please, if you could, boy, this is gonna be a big one, a copy for all Budget Committee members, at least of that. There's probably some other commissioners that would probably like to have a copy of that as well. The recent location study that you presented over Zoom, that was a good one, I think Commissioner Smallridge referenced that a minute ago. If you can bring a copy of that, I think that'll at least get us started on knowing what we're going to do. Having said that, I will circle back to the motion that was passed at the last Budget Committee meeting, that we form a committee. I think we referred that to the Operations Committee, to form a committee. That might be an option as well, if anyone knows if, if Operations discussed that, or if that's maybe on the upcoming agenda for July, I guess. But that also is an issue that we're gonna have to bring into the fold on this as well. This next comment, I'm kind of torn. I know it sounds like I'm straddling the fence on it, but I'm torn on it. I have always been a huge advocate of something passing committee before it comes to full commission. I think that's why we sit here a lot of times till 10 or 11 o'clock at night, because something didn't pass a committee, and then somebody else brings it along at full commission, and we wind up debating the issue all over again. I thought the Rules Committee had passed something that maybe it hadn't passed full commission yet, I don't know, that that would be the case. And then I understand there may be always an exception of how you get around that to still bring it up at commission. I don't like that. I don't agree with that. I'll go on record as saying that. I believe in the committee doing the heavy lifting. I believe that's why we're in some of the situations we're in sometimes. Let the Budget Committee do its job. However, I think I was the one that made the motion in Budget Committee that failed, that we do what Commissioner Mays has made a motion for us to do here tonight, so I'm torn on this particular situation. But I think we need to be consistent, and it be one way or the other, and not keep going back and forth, depending on what the issue is. Because in the past, we have made issues where some members of the commission have said, oh, no, it didn't pass that committee, or let's let that committee do its job, and let's not take the issue up here. But yet here we are with this particular issue, talking about it tonight, all right? So having said that, talking about both sides of my mouth, I'll go ahead and be a yes vote on this, on this motion. I just don't like it.
How many votes do we need?
It's like being at home, by what?
Jay, is it two-thirds, or three-fourths?
It's been to budget, I understand. Correct?
So nine, nine votes to pass?
About three-quarters.
Yeah.
The order rule is only, it's never been.
Okay.
It doesn't have to pass.
So it's just nine, nine votes?
I thought, I thought that it failed for the ARP money, but then we, we made another motion. It wasn't for opioid money.
But it didn't include the two employees that Commissioner Mays wants past, ma'am?
It was just a fund, uh, good answer.
So, but again, that was not the opioid, spending the opioid money was not part of what, so in, in my opinion, this should go back to budget, or the opioid task force that we're putting together should make the recommendation. We shouldn't be spending money and, and tying the hands of a committee that we, or a task force that we just created.
Has this particular issue that Commissioner Mays is proud of, has that been to budget?
There was a vote on last budget, which failed.
That's a simple majority, if that's what.
Commissioner McCamey?
The motion is to add this to the agenda, to the agenda. And back in April, we discussed the same thing.
This, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I might have got you confused. To pass this measure that's coming up, we need a simple majority. It's been to the Budget Committee. Are you talking about putting it on the agenda?
For tonight.
Yeah.
Like, you just amend that rule, and we, I don't think we.
Hey, can we pull it, Mr.?
Yeah, we have it.
You got the first guy.
So what, what, what will it take to add then, to add, to add it to the agenda before, just not, okay.
At our April Operations Committee meeting, we discussed this, and I asked you at that point to keep that budget in your pocket. You have it?
For four personnel, it's 256,000.
And is that what you would need for a 12-hour truck, is four people?
For a, for a brand-new 12-hour truck that's not currently on the road. Option two is to add two people to take one of our current daytime trucks and expand the hours and expand the number of days that it operates. That's what option two and two people would do. Would take a current truck that is already operating during the day, during the week, make it an everyday truck for 12 hours.
That would include weekends?
Yes, sir. It'd include weekends.
And with four, it would be an additional 12-hour truck with four people that would be stationed in the Claxton community, some area would be posted there for 12 hours.
We can post it out in the Claxton area. Ideally, we would want to try maybe some kind of partnership with the facility that, that people can get out, go to restroom, have their ability to bring food, that type of stuff. We may reach out to, to Claxton Fire. I have not approached their chief at all to see if that's even a possibility. But there's a possibility we could post it in Claxton for times during the day, yes.
Okay, and that, that amount was 256?
256,000.
That's personnel. You have, you have all the equipment.
We have all the equipment.
To add, you would be adding a 12-hour truck.
That is correct.
With the recommendation of the two people, that would only expand the hours for the one that you already have.
Correct. The one we already have doesn't operate on the weekends, but it does operate. Depending on what my operations chief, his best recommendation is, either a three-day-a-week truck, or we have a five-day-a-week truck. They operate at different hours.
Okay, but with the four people, that would give us a full-time 12-hour truck?
That is correct.
In addition to what we already have?
That is correct.
And what is your motion to?
My motion is just to add this to the agenda.
Okay.
To vote on it. And I, I thought to add to the agenda was a three-fourths majority to add to the agenda, but.
To pass, you're gonna take three-fourths if it's never been to Budget Committee, whether they voted it up or down.
Okay. And again, it just, it's not to circumvent the budget process at all, but we're, I just, you know. That's all we need to vote, motions up or down. Either vote yes or no.
So we're just voting to add?
That's all I, that's my motion.
Does, does anyone have any discussion on the motion to add this to the agenda?
I, I want to clarify, so it's a simple majority to add it to the agenda?
Since it's already been through committee, yeah.
And then, so, I, my comment would be the same, that this was brought up in budget, it was voted down. The money, the money source was not brought up in budget. The, the source came from, in their budget and the ARPA funds, the opioid money was not. So I'm gonna vote no for the point that I believe in the committee system, that's one of the, we're banging into the Rules Committee, we talked about things there. I'm not against the station. The other thing that was discussed in budget is also, is a committee of, to look at all our things, to look at the, and so we talked about that in budget, a committee mem, you know, committee members from both budget and operations, the mayor being on that, Nathan being on that. So we could have these discussions to look at the long-term solutions for EMS. And so I thought it was going to operations this month. I guess it didn't, so it'd be going to next month. Or can we just make that motion here tonight to, to make a committee?
I call for the question, Mr. Chairman. Call for the question.
All those in favor? Oh, yeah, I'm good. Are you second?
Actually, there needs a second.
There needs a second, okay.
I'll second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, call the question.
The motion is to add it to the agenda.
Yes.
Right now, we're voting on questions.
Call on the question. All those in favor, call on the question. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Raise your hand. How many? Three? Okay, motion passes. Now we're voting to add it to the agenda. All those in favor?
We can go to screen on this, right?
Yeah, we can, but I don't want to, okay, we got Vandergriff and Isabelle next. Clear, clear, let's go to the board and vote.
What, what is the motion this time?
The motion is to add to the agenda for discussion.
This, this has been changed already, the rules on this issue. So it's, the current version says to add two-thirds. As far as what I'm telling you about passage, it would require a simple majority, because the issue has been, according to Robbie, it has been to Budget Committee. No matter where the pass is failed, it's been to Budget Committee. But now our rules say to add is two-thirds. That's what I was asking about earlier.
That was, in the two.
Is that only consent agenda, because I had a question?
No, we've not even, and that, that rules packet you're referring to's not even been edited yet. No, so it's, it was two-thirds prior to, to rules, but.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two-thirds.
We've called the questions.
Is it to add to the agenda?
Add or not?
When we add it to the agenda, it's just for discussion. It's not that we've made a decision.
Right. Uh, had a, have we got, who was the second?
Shelley.
I was the second.
For calling the question.
Commissioner Wondell was on the, the second.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Wondell, okay. This is to add to the agenda.
Doesn't pass.
Nine yes, seven no. Motion, so. Didn't fail to add. We need two-thirds to add to the agenda, okay.
Commissioners, if, if I may, I'm happy to, based on your discussion, bring some ideas. I did not mention opioid funding. I did not mention, um, opioid, um, funding at budget because I wasn't asked to look at any other options. Um, but I'm happy to come back with something, work with Robbie. I don't even know, uh, I know Nathan mentioned a number. I was just asking Robbie. We don't have that information up with us. So if it's something, I know you'll have a public hearing, if you want to open that up at the budget committee, you're more than welcome, and we'll try to come armed with some ideas, some possibilities, and some things for you to consider, so...
Any other questions for, oh, right.
Do I?
Oh, I've seen, anyone have any other questions for the mayor?
I do.
Oh, Commissioner Isible, yes.
Uh, but before, you know, we got a budget meeting Thursday that we can discuss this, but I'm always been a firm supporter of committees. So if you take it back to budget in July, then operations can take it up the very next Monday. And so then we can be prepared for July's meeting to get this passed because I think, just by looking there about, I think the general consensus is to pass something using the opioid money. But it just needs to be discussed and proper, uh...
You can always amend the budget.
Yeah, you can always amend it.
Just a point of clarification, or I'm going to request a, a point of clarification on that. For when we're passing a budget, I think everything is on the table, so that, um, that doesn't have to, I mean, you're bringing a budget proposal from a committee if you all wanted to change something. I know that that's happened before, you know, kind of at the full commission level without a budget committee recommendation, so...
We've done that five, I think one time we had to have five special call meetings.
Yes, yeah.
To get a budget passed because it was changed every time.
Yes.
Yeah, usually they pay a motion to approve the budget, you're second, that opens it up for discussion, that's, that's wrote it all past.
Yeah.
Then you amend it.
Yes, yeah.
You start amending that motion by adding this and taking that away.
Yeah.
But my, my real question was about Highland Communications, where they're at in progress about broadband.
Um, I have a, uh, on, I, I need to reach out to Mark and ask, I do have a meeting with Comcast, um, I think it's next Wednesday, and so I'll have an update from them. Um, and Highland, I do not know. I know that they were just super eager to get started, and in fact, when they got notice of award, they had already started on the Frost Bottom side doing all the work. So I know that it is a long process, I want to say a two, two, almost three-year process is what I understood from the very beginning, but that may have changed, so I will get an update for you on that.
There, there was a reduction in the cost from Highland?
Um...
Is, you, because when we was talking about, when we changed it during the budget process, you know, that number changed?
Yes, so we, we, um, that's reflected on your ARP, so we had committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but then when we were able to do the property agreement, we have a forty-year plus two, Jay, you may have to remind me, was it two, five-year options to renew, back-to-back, five years?
So it really wasn't a reduction, it was just we didn't need it.
Yes, so it went, you, you get to use that again. We had to, we had just a couple of costs, and I know Robbie still has a little bit reserved, but our final cost, uh, was forty-five hundred dollars. And...
Less than what you had projected, Robbie, same money.
Yes, yes, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Vandergriff, did you have anything from before? Good, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. Uh, I guess, does everybody want to take a ten-minute break?
Please.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't mean to hold you up, but I got a, I'm a caregiver tonight. And if you can just give me a couple of minutes, I'll, I'll dispatch my report and get out of here.
Uh, if you'll turn to my written report, Mr. Chairman. If anybody has any questions on the contract approvals, the zoning violations, the compliance agreements, um, indigent deaths, bankruptcies, the change order on delinquent taxes, the deed prepared, that's, this is all common stuff. Lawsuit update, I just want to say, Petal, as I've told you, this has been going on since 2012. It was a fifteen-million-dollar request in the prayer for relief. It's been dismissed against Anderson County and all the other twenty-seven defendants in there, so that's finally off our shoulders, and I'm glad to report that. There's no liability whatsoever to the county. Uh, I do have a settlement approval, you've got that in your packet, that's the bus line settlement. Uh, that's Andersonville, Long Iron Parker Bus Lines. Um, you've got that, I need approval of that settle, settlement agreement tonight. Now, I want you to understand, part of that settlement agreement is for us to issue renewals, which we've already got for one more year to these individuals, so we can work out the bidding process. So you're actually approving the settlement terms, and embodied in those settlement terms is these three renewals for one year. Uh, so we'll go back and rebid these next year. Any questions on that settlement? It's no loss of money to the county, no liability to the county. Yes, sir, I, thank you, sir.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Private Act ratification. This is the repeal of the Veterans Service Private Act from nineteen forty-seven. Will be under the statutory scheme. It's much more improved. The old Private Act that we had passed years ago is antiquated. It doesn't do justice to the position and all the things that Leon does, so we're back, we'll be back under the state statutes. I'll need a two-thirds vote to ratify this Private Act. It's already been to the General Assembly, passed there. It's already been here to this commission last year, and it passed with a two-thirds vote. So we need two thirds to ratify it on this next end.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to ratify, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Last item I have is a juvenile judge vacancy. I need permission to go ahead and proceed with that vacancy. I explained operations will be under the normal vacancy statute and not that where the governor appoints. That was brought up by the AOC. I've talked to the governor's office for judicial vacancies. They agree with us that our Private Act will control, uh, and so it'll be under our normal vacancy statute. County commission will make that selection. The other thing I want you to realize is, and I've asked this question too, from both entities, all the requirements, both in the constitution, the statu- statutes, and our Private Act on point will apply. That means the residency requirements. We can't bring another judge in, a retired judge from a neighboring county that doesn't reside in Anderson County. This will be through August, uh, to May, and, uh, I'd just like permission to start that with Annette and Mr. Cole to move forward with that. We'll have to have that person in place at the next county commission meeting. Judge Hunt leaves the first of August.
A motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Bo Champ to move forward with that. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner Wondell.
Oh, sorry, I hit the wrong button.
Oh, okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Any questions? I'm going to turn these documents over. Uh, Josh and Mayor, you'll need to sign two different documents tonight. You'll be signing the settlement document and the Private Act document. Thank you all so much.
Thanks. Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Jay, just quickly, I, I know you got to go, but...
No problem.
Under the fire commission report, we're going to have a couple items I just want to get your...
Sure.
...suggestion or ideas on. It's the Anderson County Multi Juris- Jurisdiction Outside County Response Plan. It looks like they revised it as of June eighth, and then also the Anderson County Fire Commission bylaws. I think we passed them once already, uh, but we got...
I think three different versions.
Okay. So can we proceed tonight to pass those two items, or do, do we need to forward it back to you, or what do we need to do there?
We proceed tonight if it's on the agenda, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one more last thing. HOAs, homeowners associations. Does the county have any, um, is there anything we can do if there's an issue with a homeowners association?
Those are private rights of action between the people or contractual, uh, by deed and between the people that are members of that homeowners association.
Okay.
We have to treat some different with respect to delinquent tax properties and things of that nature, but...
Okay.
No, we don't intervene. Those are private rights of action.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, do we want a ten-minute break now? And then we'll come back and start the committee reports. Nine twenty-five.
We take a break?
Yeah.
Did Jerry White leave? Commissioner White probably mark him absent. This is what we're waiting on. Can't go to the fire commission report till we get Chairman Wondell back. Is the TV on out there still? Commissioner Wondell? Commissioner Wondell? Oh, thanks. Whenever you're ready for the fire commission report.
Well, I missed that meeting too.
Oh, okay.
But they did meet. You have the fire commission report in front of you. The two things that are most important, I guess, is the, as I mentioned earlier to Jay, is that multi-jurisdiction outside county response plan they approved, and then the Anderson County Fire Commission bylaws revised. I think they added the E-911 seat as a non-voting member. I'm using the wrong terms, but if anybody doesn't have any questions, we can go ahead and pass it, or however you'd like to proceed. I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the fire commission? Let's go to the board and vote. Twelve yes, motion passes.
That concludes the report. I believe the next meeting is July 11th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we've got the library board minutes requested by Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to refer this, these minutes back to the library board committee. There's several mistakes on here, and if it's okay, just for the sake of time, I've got them marked. I can either get with the board chair or the secretary and discuss those, or we can point them out.
Commissioner Mays.
No, it's my motion to approve her request.
To approve the...
Her working with the board director or...
The secretary.
Okay, any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, is it grammatical errors, or...
No, there are some people, there's some people listed on here that's incorrect.
Oh, okay.
There's some appointments that did not take place. There's some, just Robert's rules of order.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
Misconception.
Well, we've got this board secretary here. Do you want to point out what's... If there's something specific?
Okay, sure.
Wait, hold on a second. Is this... We've got a motion on the floor. Can we either vote on it, or... Or what's the... I mean, the motion on the floor was for her to work with the board secretary to clean these up. And I don't think it was my intent for it to be right here at the podium.
Commissioner Isbell, would you have it?
I'll cancel based on his conversation. I was just going to point out the things that I saw was the Briceville Library Board Director, who listed in the minutes was Vicki Underwood, but it's not Vicki Underwood.
Staffing.
That was corrected.
Okay.
At the meeting, we, whoever came up, had Vicki Underwood declared.
Okay, well, I mean, in our minutes, it wasn't the ones that I saw.
I guess you got the unvended document.
Commissioner Yager.
I concur with Commissioner Mays that this is not a part of the business meeting.
So we're vote... Okay, so this motion to refer these back to the library board? Okay. All right, let's go to the board and vote then, if there's no other discussion. Motion passes.
I'll be glad to take you to that and work on it.
Okay.
Work with you anytime.
Sure. You might want to...
Okay, new business. Got the school contract. Has everybody had a chance to read that? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the school contract purchase of Crossroads Christ Fellowship Church for the new Claxton Elementary School.
Second about Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Commissioner Wells.
Yeah, I guess, just looking at this, there's already a few questions I've got. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that we don't have any legal representation to answer any questions for us, or representative of the schools at this point. It kind of goes back to my stress earlier in the meeting. We didn't have due diligence in time to study this ahead of time. I'll go ahead and bring up just one simple one. Brokerage, this is on Section C under Paragraph Four. It's discussing brokerage fees. Seller agrees to pay listing broker at closing the compensation specified by separate agreement. Well, we don't have a separate agreement. Standard on a residential is going to be around six percent. That can vary in commercial properties. So how can we justify voting on something that's a $3 million sale price? If it's a five percent commission, that's $150,000 in fees that we're paying, and we don't know that as legislators right now. So I would, in my position, I would say we table this until Thursday night. Give us 48 hours, 72 hours to go over this and make sure we do our diligence on the issue. Because there's, there's money on the table here that we don't even know what it is. Not to mention, and I'll leave it on this, the $25,000 earnest money, that's if not already paid, to be due within five days. And again, I may just need to read through this quicker. I don't see where we get that back automatically. I read the special conditions on the surveys and everything else done, but the contract, it doesn't clearly spell with that money that we get that back. So again, I don't see a reason why we can't table this till Thursday. And I am in support of it, once we do our homework.
Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Wells, and I just want to remind this body that we just failed, that we just shut down a motion on something that hasn't gone through. That actually went through committee, but that, but this has not gone in front of a committee. So I would just encourage everyone to, you know, consider that when they make their vote.
So is there a rest to defer? If we could defer to the purchasing committee? I mean, I know he said Thursday, but is there... I know the purchase committee would need again before the new fiscal year.
It's clear they won't.
No.
But is there, I mean, I know we need it to do for the new fiscal year. Could we...
It's a special call meeting. I'm doing the agenda. I can add this to the agenda for Thursday and try to get... Well, I mean, I would ask that you email your questions to Jay or the school's legal representative. I mean, like you, I received this very late. Honestly, I don't like adding things to the agenda late either. This is the very reason why, because now I've spent two and a half hours sitting here to wait on... I mean, and it's not your fault, but it should have went through the purchasing committee, and it wasn't done in time, so...
So I'll make that motion to defer to the purchasing committee.
That would be another month.
I mean, I understand that. So, but I mean, is that holding this...
Time is of the essence in this contract. It does stipulate that.
Okay.
Commissioner Isbell.
Well, I was just going to speak on to Commissioner Wells. He actually took Catherine's seat, and she was the real estate guru, and his past experience is the same. You know, if we do take it up Thursday night instead of tonight, Jay will be here, I would assume, and...
Dr. Parrott will be here also.
And Dr. Parrott will be as well, so I'd be okay with Thursday night.
Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have slept since our last meeting. Someone remind me that the time is of the essence due to...
August what? Closing date, the 25th?
May I speak on that to attest back to our purchasing meeting? What it, and this is totally understandable, this church is cutting the county deal from all accounts. They're giving us a really good price on this. There are other interested buyers, from what they've said. I think we should believe them in that. So to me, time is of the essence, and it stipulates in the contract to get the closing done by August. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're working with a potential seller that is willing to help us out here, willing to work with us. But again, 72 hours is not going to conflict with that August closing date, as opposed to pushing it to purchasing next month, which...
And I, I'm like Commissioner Isbell. I'm certainly going to yield Commissioner Wells' expertise on this matter. I guess my hope was it would be able to be referred to the purchasing committee, or budget committee, or whomever. So I mean, if you experts in the field are telling me that's not feasible, then... All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion knowledgeable.
Commissioner Wondell, your motion is to go ahead and approve tonight, is that right?
That was my motion.
That was your motion, okay, just making sure. Any other discussion? Okay, so let's go to the board and vote, and this is...
Hang on just a second, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The motion on the floor is to approve, right?
Correct.
Commissioner Wells did not make a motion to defer until Thursday night?
I have not, but I'm happy to. That'll satisfy the...
There was a motion by Commissioner Foster to defer.
I pulled it back.
But he pulled it back, and that was to send it to purchasing. If your motion is an amendment, or does it have to amend to defer?
No, it's not an amendment.
Okay, if you want to make a motion to defer until Thursday night...
I'll make that motion if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to say one thing. I do have, I would like to get clarification from Jay, which is in legal opinion. If we can put this on the agenda Thursday, because the special call meeting, you have to advertise what your meeting is about, and we did not advertise that. So I don't want to do anything wrong.
May I, would that 48-hour notice apply here? Did it go in the 48-hour from the General Assembly? Or is that effective July 1? I know there was two of them, but I just can't remember in my head.
So from...
The 48-hour notice?
I can fit it on the website. I'm going to get the agenda out. I'll add it with the possibility that it may have to be...
Commissioner Wondell.
Hold on, Commissioner McCamey. I saw you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my original motion. And the original motion now should be to approve the purchase contract as presented, contingent on all questions from this body, the mayor, law director, purchasing, and any others that have any say-so in it. All questions are answered before it's executed. That's my motion.
But even if we're not satisfied with those answers, then that motion then still going to go through, and it's going to be executed regardless. Is that clarifying or...
Not necessarily. I mean, you've got to get your question answered first. You've got to get your question to him, then he'll answer you. And then you can, if you don't like it, I guess you could vote no. You see what I'm saying?
Dr. Parrott is saying that they are not paying any brokerage fees. I don't know if that clarifies anything for anybody. Are you okay with that, how he's amending that?
The amendment is to defer until Thursday night.
Well, now, his amendment, well, he's...
Mine was to pass and contingent on all these questions being answered. Got one question answered. I know there's many more, and we'll get those answers too. But go ahead, if you've got something else there.
Your original motion, according to Commissioner Wells, was deferred until Thursday.
No, my motion was to pass it as presented right now.
I know, and that, he defers that motion. His motion to defer to your original motion...
Gotcha.
Yeah, you can't change it now because of the deferral motion and...
Did he get a second on his deferral?
Yeah, it was me. Yeah, he got a second by Commissioner Vow.
Then you would be correct. I'll shut up.
So are we voting on the deferral now?
On the deferral. Now, he did say Thursday night. That wouldn't necessarily have to be advertised, because we're deferring something from a public meeting until Thursday night, and we can take it up Thursday night.
So let's vote.
That's why he's the goat.
Any other...
That's why you're the goat greatest of all times.
Okay, so let's go to the board. We're going to vote on the, to defer this to Thursday night. Okay. Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, goat means greatest of all times.
Yeah. Not that you look like one.
Okay, I will get it on the agenda and get as much information as I can.
Okay. Old business, Commissioner Isbell.
Okay, we've had several issues, and I've passed over to you what we've had. We, and I say thank you to Commissioner Vow for getting all this put together today. We've had like nine incidents of tractor-trailers turning from Carroll Hollow onto 25W, blocking traffic for an hour, hour and a half. And you'll see that, and the highway department has done everything that they can do in posting signs. The state has posted signs on 25W that seems to be more effective, because they're not turning left onto Carroll Hollow. Well, the signs coming out of Clinton are, you know, they're a smaller sign, but it's still that, you know, it's got a crossbar in it. But he's done everything, and we've done everything. But Commissioner Vow and myself, and I'm sure some of the other commissioners, and I think the chairman has even gotten Commissioner McCamey. You know, we've all got complaints about what can we do? And I just want to let, you know, the public that, that we are aware of it, and the road superintendent is aware of it. And I talked to our IT director and asked him, is there any way that we could get with these GPS companies? Because we had talked about it earlier. And if, when these tractor-trailers are stopped, because they're probably using automobile instead of a truck GPS, that he could actually contact the company or the GPS corporation, once they find out, who are you using? To try to help eliminate that, because I don't know what else we could do. You know, everything that the road department's done, and, you know, we're aware of it, and we're all taking complaints about it. So, you know, and I'm just asking for suggestions. Other than that, what can we do? And, you know, if the law, or if the IT director wants to, you know, speak about it.
The trucker's GPS system that's in their trucks, a lot of the trucks that are doing this, they bear some responsibility to the expense of this if it's fully ignored. That's the way I see it. There should be some communication with the companies that post that to the GPS. That's what I would like to do, is reach out and speak to them, try to get ahold of someone. I'll give it my best shot.
Well, I'm sure the GPS is the one that's sending them that way.
Yeah, that's what I think's going on.
Yeah.
I think their trucks being loaded with the information to show them a quick route, and they can choose in their GPS system to, to take, to take less traveled roads and things like that. And that could be a choice factor in their software that needs to be removed for that road.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know one particular driver I ran into, not literally, but we stopped and had a conversation a few weeks ago, turned on the Dutch Valley Road. And he stopped me to ask me how to get to I-40.
Yeah.
And I told him you couldn't get that from here. But I eventually continued the conversation, but he had been using a GPS for a car, and not for a tractor-trailer.
For not the tractor-trailer side.
And after explaining that to him, of course, he claimed he didn't know. You know, he went from around here, and I didn't know him. I don't know for sure if he did or not. I asked him to be sure to tell all of his buddies, you know, don't come this way. An idea that I just came from, thought about, I have spoken with the sheriff's office about this, and they've been in consultation with the law director as far as that being a county road and us restricting it as a sheriff's office, what law they could quote with TCA to actually cite them. That's wound up being one of the issues that we've had. Chief Galloway is working with Jay on that. I just got that confirmed from him. Another issue, of course, if they are commercial vehicles, then they fall under the Tennessee Highway Patrol Commercial Vehicle Enforcement side. And I've spoken to them about the tractor-trailers on Highway 116, Briceville Highway, New River Highway. I've been running out of the road once myself, and still get phone calls from constituents about that. Of course, that's a state road. But maybe the Highway Patrol's Commercial Vehicle side could also do some extra enforcement on our county roads, since they are still commercial vehicles, and be able to help us... since they are still commercial vehicles, and be able to help us as well. So that's something I just thought of, that I may be able to contact the Highway Patrol and see if they can...
Well, I noticed that, and I were really seen on one where they were cited, but it was where one tractor-trailer had the road blocked, and there was another one behind it. So it was, you know, it was a double thing, because once they got that one out of the way, then they got to get the other one out of the way. Because there's no way to back up, so.
Reach out to those groups if you'd like. If you've got that information, I'll take it and go with it, start on it.
Okay.
Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I followed a truck out of Clinton, out past St. River School, and I stopped him just before he turned on the Carroll Hollow and told him that he could not turn left. I asked him where he was going. He said he was going to Forum Hall, which is the old cabinet shop out there on sixty, uh, 25W, going toward Lake City or Rocky Top. I told him, I said, when you get to the end of this road, there's no place here to turn around. You're going to have to go that way now. But when you get to the end of that road, you're going to have to turn right. Because they can turn right and go on out and not get hung up. It's when they try to make the left-hand turn out of Carroll Hollow that it, the feet of the trailer actually drags and cuts into the asphalt. So maybe a no-left-hand turn sign for trucks only.
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I don't know if that would work or not, but I, you know, if you had a no-left turn, then when they get hung up, you can catch them and write them a ticket, you know. They can't, they can't go anywhere.
No, man, the second verse, no. I'm sorry. It's posted, no trucks. I mean, no right turn, no trucks, period, point blank. You got a picture there, okay? Going out there and trying to go right. Carroll Hollow's not designed, it's no, it's not designed for that kind of traffic.
Exactly.
There's liability in that. If you start trying to tell them, go out there and go right-handed, just don't go left, but no. In my opinion, Jay's not here, but law enforcement's not here, but no.
Well, that, that county road is not designed to carry that much weight or width.
No, I'm not, I'm not speaking about doing away with the no-truck sign. Those are there, but they're doing it anyway.
Okay.
So if you have another sign at the end that says no-left turn for trucks, you know, I, I think that would help, because they don't get hung up that way.
They'd read this sign, said no trucks, they don't need to have a choice.
That's true, but they're going that way anyway. And it's not, it's not really their choice. It's a choice for everybody else that gets involved in it, you know, because they're, they're hung up there. Like I said, for two hours, you got the road blocked until they can get that...
I agree with that too, but that trucker won't go back that way, or shouldn't. But we don't need them out there trying to go right-handed either, because they can't do it without getting in the wrong lane of traffic and having some blockage on that. But no, we're not going to put up a sign that says right turn only, not on Carroll Hollow. It's not designed for the traffic, and I'm here to answer your questions.
But I can speak with the people at Forum Hall, and they will instruct their drivers not to come that way.
Yeah.
And, you know, we need to know their destination, you know, when they go, you know, it's just like whoever the deputy is that's working the wreck, if he can find out these things, I mean, that's just a way of eliminating it. Because you don't know who the next truck driver's going to be that's delivering to Forum Hall. It may not be the same one, may not be the same company. But if they can inform the people that they've got contracted to haul for them, well, they can let them know that you can't come that way. I mean, that's just one possible thing.
Well, that was the only...
It just shows effort.
That was the only business up through there, and he just, he immediately pulled out his manifest there. And he said, I'm going to Forum Hall. And I said, well, you can't get there from here, turning left with your GPS. You will not, you will not get out of there. You'll be hung up right there on 25W. And he went out and turned to the right, and I don't know where he went and turned around.
Well, and a lot of them, they, they start out on Laurel Road, and then on Highway 61, there's three different sets of signs coming in that way to get to Carroll Hollow.
Yeah.
So, but it's just ignoring the signs. And then again, if you've talked to them very much, and sometimes they have trouble communicating and understanding English and trying to explain to them. And we've got pictures out there that says no trucks. They crossing that wooden bridge on Johnson Gap, and it says five tons. And man, it don't make sense. I mean, it just, they just ignored it. So, or again, but we'll see. I mean, this GPS deal might be the way to answer it, might be. But I'd say they're coming from another location. Forum Hall is a lot of their destination. But no, we don't know tractor-trailers on Carroll Hollow going right, period, in my opinion. And you all, anyway, and we appreciate your comments, but no.
I just thought, you know, if they're going to be on there anyway.
Yeah, no, we're not going to allow them out there on the right-hand turn, in my opinion. We're not, yeah, somebody else will get it. No. It ain't, it ain't fair to residents on Carroll Hollow. I mean, if you was out there living out there, and you was out there trying to learn to drive, no. The road's not designed for it. We're not going to have it. I don't know what we'll do to stop them. But no, okay?
I think in this report, you'll see that it's an average of an hour and a half to clear them up.
Well, evening, well, and I, and I'm concerned about the hour and a half delays. But we're kind of late going to have on Carroll Hollow if you run over somebody and kill four or five. But no, it's not an option.
Commissioner Wondell.
When that happens, and it's delayed for an hour, is there a ticket issue?
I actually only saw...
That's what we were talking about earlier. Chief Galloway's working with Jay, because it's a county road. What Tennessee code annotated, what state law can we use since it's not a state road? Because we, as a county body, or the Road Committee, has, has voted to say no tractor-trailers on this road.
I've sent an email to Jay to see if this could be sent out to all the commissioners, you know, for consideration. Because it's got some information on there about the driver that I don't know if it's, you know, can be let out or not. But it even tells you who the wrecker service was that they called, and if they couldn't make it, who they went to next. And you'll see, you know, several of them right here, and this number one here, it says another tractor-trailer behind them when they just stuck.
Can we put a, I mean, can we pass a private act, and then maybe put it on the bottom of the sign, penalty of $1,000 or something? I'm just throwing...
I was under the impression, after you got the proper signage up with the supplementary signs, and that's what those signs on the state route are, they're just supplementing our signs, because the legality's on the county road and not theirs. And they did put them up for us, and that's a common courtesy that doesn't very often happen. They did us a great job. But I was under the impression it's going to start citing the drivers. And it's pretty obvious when they're driving through these signs that says no trucks. I mean, I, I don't know. I can't answer that. I'm not authorized to issue citations.
Do you have any, like what it has usually cost? I know it, it happens at Brooks Gap sometimes, the same thing, where they get stuck on the, it's not happened lately, but when it tears up the...
Well, when the interstate blocks, they go around through there, and that's exactly what causes that, a lot of that.
But if they tear up the shoulder, they dig into the asphalt, what's that usually?
Very, it's very minimal as far as repairing the asphalt, because, I mean, they'll just go sit there and cut a groove with the dollies on it most often. And depends, they had one, those tankers went through there, and it messed the tanker up. And it's blockage of the road. The wrecker service is the biggest bill that they'll incur. But I think somewhere along the line, we need to start, maybe, maybe there's some violation and change. Brian and him were working on that. And I don't, of course, millions of truckers out there from different distribution-driving facilities. But if you got, start getting their money, and, you know, I bet they don't come back through there. I mean, it might be a slow way to make them aware of it. I don't know.
On these reports, there's a place at the top that says bill for call. In other words, do they get billed from the county? And I think it's probably something that we should do. But on each one, I'm going to go through and see, it'll say, you know, bill for call, and it says no. So I'm assuming...
That's probably something the computer program offers. They sell that particular software to everybody. And some places may be different than others if they do that, or able to do that or not. I don't know. I'm guessing on that board.
And what Brian's talking about doing might help eliminate some of it. But I'm sure the GPS system says go left. They ignore all the signs, go left, you know, so.
Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I would just add to it that General Clark also has to be willing to prosecute this. So it's not just a matter of between the Sheriff's Department writing the ticket, or Jay approving. You know, so if General Clark is willing to prosecute it, then, yeah, but if he's not...
With that comment said, that General Clark had made some comments earlier, and that's the reason we changed some of our signage on the county roads to meet the status. But there again, you got to get them in court.
So do you need a, do we need a motion for the IT director to proceed forward? But he's going to have to get the information from the Sheriff's Department about who, who's GPS? And I guess he could go back on these reports and try to find out who they used before, yeah.
He's finding on what system, like Gary said, what are, are they using a commercial trucking, or are they using Google Maps?
Because I'm sure what they're doing, they're not looking, they're listening. So whether it's in Spanish or whatever, that's what they're listening to, to take a right, because they're looking at the road, and that's why they pass up the signs. You know, the signs on 25W are state signs, and they're a whole lot bigger, but they, you know, typically, they don't turn left or coming out of Little Grove, Carroll Hollow.
Yeah, I think, if you want to make that as a motion to...
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Just have, got a motion by Commissioner Isbell, and seconded by Commissioner Val, to have the IT director coordinate with the sheriff to contact the GPS. Any other discussion? Let's go to the Board and vote. Oh, motion by Isbell, seconded by Val. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll get with the sheriff and get back to y'all. Any other old business? If not, we will be back here Thursday.